Good afternoon. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I am Tyra Bataglia, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the October 8th, 2025 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15 PM following the reports section of the Board Meeting Agenda. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allowed at three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence your cellphones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you're not speaking and use your cards when you would like to ask questions or comment. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Dr. Malvo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Whistler is with us today via Zoom. And may I please have an approval of the minutes. Unapproved Board Meeting Minutes from September 10th, 2025. Moved by Dr. Malvo. Second by Ms. Zimmer. All in favor?
Aye.
And an approval of the minutes from the unapproved Joint Meeting Minutes from September 25th, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Zimmer. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? All right. We will move on now to the Carroll County Student Government Report. Hello, Mr. Dean. How are you today?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board Members. Dr. McCabe, thank you so much for the ability to speak today. My name is Mason Dean. I am a senior at Winters Mill High School, and I am your Cal County Student Government Association President for the 2025-2026 school year. This month CCSJA has held an Executive Board Meeting to begin preparations for our Fall General Assembly, which will take place October the 15th. And in the coming month, we will have, we will hold our first General Assembly Meeting of the year on the 15th. The day prior, we will hold a preliminary meeting to ensure that all is prepared, all is planned, and that everything is in order so we are able to accurately convey the information we need to. This General Assembly will be from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Westminster High School, and we will see middle and high school students from across the county. They will have the opportunity to participate in workshop sessions and a feeder school discussion between the high schools and their feeder middle schools. We will also hear from our speakers, Dr. McCabe for an introduction, and Mr. Ed Rothstein, a former county commissioner. Thank you all so much for your time today, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to Board Member Activities and Correspondence, and we also have some statements that Board Members will be reading to for acknowledgements throughout the month. So we will start with Dr. Malvo.
All right, thank you. This month is National School Lunch Week, and next week, October 13th through 17th, is National School Lunch Week, as I said. Our food service employees do an exceptional job ensuring that our students have access to healthy meals each day. A nutritious lunch is important for our students and contributes to their well-being and their academic success. Thanks to all of our dedicated food service employees for serving our students and promoting healthy eating habits. So as for my monthly report, here are some of the events, activities in which I engaged in. At 8:30 in the morning on September the 11th, I gathered with community members and county representatives for a very solemn September 11th Memorial at the Carroll County Public Safety Training Center. Unity, remembrance, deep reflection, these were all considered as the sacrifices that were made by first responders, military personnel, and citizens of all backgrounds on 9/11 in 2001. The memorial was a strong reminder of the amazing freedoms that we hold as American citizens. So quite a blessed but difficult morning. Concerning a separate event, it's important to remain aware of the current and evolving status of the Maryland Blueprint, and so therefore I tuned in with the Blueprint Accountability and Implementation Board's regular meeting on September 18th and tried to be a sponge. In addition, on the evening of September the 18th, I took part in a gathering with the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, or CCAC, sometimes known as. This back-to-school gathering allowed for families to gather, CCPS children to just have a good time on the playground together, and in addition, CCAC leadership communicated about the organization's objectives, as well as their desire to get continued input from parents, community partners, teachers, administrators, and many more to address the needed benefits and concerns for our students with disabilities. I want to thank, in particular, the Director Christine Whittle, as well as Coordinator Christine Hoffman, other administrators, and your dedication and assistance for our special education and special needs community. On September the 25th, I took part in the joint meeting between the Board of Education Members here and the Board of County Commissioners, and that included, of course, newly-appointed Commissioner Susan Krebs. The focus was on our Board of Education's capital improvement request. Essential discussion took place regarding consideration and reconsideration of additions occurring at Freedom Elementary and Sykesville Middle School, a topic that was discussed in some detail and will be considered today. That evening, the 25th, I also joined in the Family Life Advisory Committee, sometimes known as FLAC. The purpose, guidelines, norms, and accomplishments of the committee were shared, and I want to extend again congratulations to the newly-elected Chair Caitlin Edmondson and Vice Chair Shannon Hinkhouse. And in addition, thank you for all of the CCPS parents and volunteer citizens who came to meet for this very packed gathering. September the 26th, I attended the Maryland Teacher of the Year Gala, an event that recognized the creativity, dedication, and leadership among our educators. Congratulations to our own Carroll County Teacher of the Year, Amy Glasscock of Winfield Elementary School, and to Alana Sword Pooyear, or Peryear, a fourth-grade teacher at Monocacy Elementary School in Frederick, who took the honor of Maryland Teacher of the Year. Also, I want to congratulate the other six finalists who were competing for the state award, who showed themselves to be truly outstanding educators. And Dr. McCabe, thank you for inviting me to this event as well. I enjoyed that. Thank you.
Dr. Dorsey?
Thank you. I'll begin with some designations for the month of October. I'll start with National Principals Month. October is National Principals Month, a time for us to celebrate excellence in school leadership and to recognize the critical role that our principals play in school achievement and student success. Our principals do a tremendous job leading our efforts to focus on teaching and learning. So on behalf of the Board, I would like to thank all our outstanding principals for their leadership, hard work, and dedication to our schools, students, and staff. Also, Bus Safety Week and Bus Driver and Bus Assistant Recognition Day. October 20th through 24th is National School Bus Safety Week. We also have designated Tuesday, October 21st, as Bus Drivers and Bus Assistance Recognition Day. In Carroll County, 24,500 students are eligible for transportation, and our buses travel more than 5.2 million miles a year. We thank all of our contractors, drivers, and assistants, as well as our Transportation Services Department, for their commitment to providing safe and efficient transportation for our students. For my activities, on September 11th, I attended a planning meeting for MAB's Conference Program Committee. We reviewed and continued to refine plans for this year's conference. That day at noon, I was driving by and I saw a gathering at Missions Barbecue, and I stopped by for their noon live salute to our nation honoring the victims of 9/11. On September 19th, I attended our Equity Meeting for CCPS. We had an introduction of our team members. We discussed the August Regional Meeting, and we reviewed MCAP data based on student groups. So we certainly thanked Dr. Moore for facilitating our meeting. I also, on that day, attended a MAB Equity Committee Meeting. We continued planning for the remarketing of equity and reclaiming that equity is for all. On the 25th, the MAB Conference Program Committee met, and again, we continued refining plans for this year's conference, which is coming up very, very soon. We begin on Sunday the 19th, and then we have Monday the 20th and the 21st, so two full days for our conference this year. And I certainly am appreciative that our fellow Board Members and Dr. McCabe will be joining us for our conference. I also attended the joint meeting with my fellow Board Members and County Commissioners. I certainly remain grateful for the opportunity to have these collaborative meetings to share our system needs. Thanks to Dr. McCabe and staff for leading the discussion. On September 26th, I also attended the Teacher of the Year Gala. This continues to be a highlight of our teaching profession as we celebrate it with the 24 Teachers of the Year and their guests, as well as with former Teachers of the Year and leaders throughout the state. Congratulations again, and thanks to Amy Glasscock for representing our system so well. And also, special thanks to our last year's Teacher of the Year, Brian Thompson, and his instrumental music students from Westminster Elementary School. They shared a rendition of Louie Louie to begin the evening celebration. On October 3rd, I met with the MAB Equity Committee, and we finalized plans for a presentation for this year's MAB Conference. And finally, on this morning, I attended MAB's Legislative Committee Meeting, and during that meeting, we had early thoughts on the upcoming legislative session in Annapolis and a draft of our legislative priorities among the items that were discussed and shared. So that's my report for the month. Thank you.
Go ahead and have our student rep read your report. Thank you.
So I, along with Mr. Dean, attended the CCSJA meeting where we were able to review and finalize the agenda and workshops for the Fall General Assembly at Westminster High School on October 15th. During this meeting, we were also able to review and provide feedback on each other's passion projects. And I just wanted to point out that MASC, the Maryland Association of Student Councils, are having their Fall Leadership Conference at Northwestern High in Montgomery County on November 23rd. You should reach out to your SGA advisor if you are interested in attending. It's super fun, and it's a great way to be involved at the state level. And I also want to say that I hope everyone had or will have a fun, joy-filled homecoming evening dance. And lastly, I really hope everyone is having a great fall sports season.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmer?
October 19th through 25th has been designated as America's Safe School Week. Here in Carroll County, we continue to place an emphasis on improving school security to ensure that our schools are a safe place to learn and teach. Thanks to Curtis Pierce, Brian Elliott, the Security Advisory Council, our school resource officers, and local law enforcement for their leadership in keeping our students and staff safe and our buildings secure. That's of the utmost importance, so a huge thank you to them. On Tuesday, September 17th, I attended the South Carroll Business Association Luncheon, where Mr. Shockney gave a presentation on Carroll County Public Schools. He did a very good job at that as well. On Monday, September 23rd, I attended the Shepherd Staff Groundbreaking Ceremony for their new building that's going up on Carroll Street here in Westminster. Later that day, on September 23rd, I had the opportunity to speak with a small group of teachers to gather feedback and input about CCPS's Second Chance Learning Program. On Wednesday, September 25th, along with my other Board Members, I attended the joint meeting with the Board of Carroll County Commissioners. On Thursday, September 26th, I also attended the Maryland Teacher of the Year Gala to celebrate Carroll County's own Ms. Amy Glasscock. On Friday, October 3rd, I visited Tawnytown Elementary School and spent some time with Principal Bauer to learn more about their new addition, as well as their community school status. September 17th was Constitution Day, a celebration of the document that defines our freedoms and unites us as Americans. This month, I'd like to spotlight CCPS's focus on teaching our students about the Constitution. While lessons might look a little bit different for each grade level, it is a statewide expectation that, a system-wide expectation, that our students learn about the Constitution and the enduring principles that it upholds. Teaching the Constitution is essential. It's a foundation of our government and laws, promotes informed and active citizenship, fosters critical thinking, builds unity and respect for shared values, and fulfills our civic educational responsibility. Thank you to Mr. Warnick, Mr. Letch, and Mr. Melhorn for providing our teachers with support and resources that they need to help students to understand and appreciate this cornerstone of our democracy and the freedoms that we cherish as Americans. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whistler?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues for allowing me to join you today from Norfolk, Virginia. Couldn't get back in time. A very busy month. September 11th, I attended a 9/11 ceremony at the Carroll County Public Safety Center in Westminster, where our sheriff, commissioners, and firefighters remembered and honored nearly 3,000 victims. I was proud to hear our fire chief talk about our CCPS Career and Tech Center students who in 2016 helped design and build the memorial there. Later that afternoon, I attended a wreath laying ceremony at Mount Airy at the Pine Grove Chapel to remember Navy Lieutenant Robert Vock and Army Chief Warrant Officer William Ruth, two local heroes of Mount Airy who perished in the 9/11 attack on the Pentagon. I was so proud to see so many veterans, first responders, and Boy and Girl Scouts there to pay tribute. Also, on September 11th, I attended the Spurring End Ceremony for Commissioner Susan Krebs, who I know will continue to be a tremendous advocate for our educators and students. On September 12th, Dr. McCabe and I attended a Board of Education Capstone Meeting in Anarundale County with other county superintendents and Board of Education leaders from across the state. We had very rich discussions on ways we can improve the professional development of our educators and improve student outcomes. On September 15th, I attended the Liberty-South Carroll High School JV game, football game at Liberty High. While there was terrific action on the field, it was overshadowed by the concerns of many parents that the stadium lights had been removed. I'm happy to say that the mood was completely different at the Liberty-Westminster varsity football game on October 3rd. The lights looked terrific, and many were so grateful that the school acted quickly to get things back on track for the homecoming game. So well done to the staff and our administrators at each school, Westminster and Liberty. On September 17th, I too, along with Ms. Zimmer, attended the business luncheon there in Eldersburg, where our Assistant Superintendent Nick Shockney did a wonderful job talking to the business community about Blueprint and its impact on our business community. So thank you, Mr. Shockney, for that. On September 23rd, I attended a CCPS Audit Committee Meeting. I appreciate the tremendous efforts of our staff and volunteers to ensure that we meet every legal and ethical requirement in our school system. I was pleased to see a very favorable report by Clifton Larson Allen, which the Board will review later in today's session. On September 25th, I attended a Joint Board of Commissioners and Education Meeting here at Central Office. I'm truly grateful for the extensive collaboration and the way we work together at the county level to ensure that every educator and student have what they need to succeed. I also, later that afternoon, attended our FLAC Meeting, our Family Life Advisory Committee Meeting. Again, very grateful to our parents and educators that take time out of their day to help us shape the health curriculum and the way we deliver those topics to our students all throughout our school system. Later that evening on the 25th, my wife and I went downtown Westminster for their annual Fall Fest Parade. Great job to the town council and mayor for getting everyone out and enjoying one of our best small-town traditions. On September 26th, my wife and I were honored to attend the Teacher of the Year Ceremony with my colleagues in Cockeysville. It was great seeing the very best of our state's educators come together and celebrate the teaching profession. Once again, congratulations to our very own Teacher of the Year, Amy Glasscock. It was a pleasure to meet her family and help celebrate her remarkable accomplishments. My wife and I were also truly blessed to receive an invitation from the White House Associate Director of Veterans Affairs to attend the 250th Navy Anniversary Celebration here in Norfolk on Sunday, October 5th. I take immense pride in my 20 years of naval service and appreciate the selfless efforts of every sailor and marine who continue to defend our nation today. The entire crowd, and I loved hearing from our Secretary of War Pete Hegseth, the First Lady Melania Trump, and our Commander-in-Chief President Trump. And then finally, earlier today, on October 8th, I attended our MAB Legislative Committee Meeting, where we worked alongside representatives from every one of our legislative education authorities throughout the state to talk about our plan for lobbying the legislature here during the upcoming session, and I look forward to meeting my colleagues at the MAB Conference later this month. Thank you, Madam President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Whistler. All right. September 23rd, I attended our first CAC meeting here in the boardroom that we had for the school year, and it was very well-attended. September 25th, participated with my fellow Board Members for our joint meeting with the County Commissioners. Couple upcoming events this Saturday. Do not forget to go to the Career and Technology Center for their wonderful and fantastic breakfast. Their breakfast fundraiser is a big deal. Mr. Dean is in the culinary program, and he assists in that. And again, it's one of my favorite events that the Career and Tech Center holds, so please go out and participate in that. October 17th, I will be participating in my Class of '96 30th High School reunion. We're going to be doing two things, one in the fall, one in the spring, so we will be attending the Westminster High School Homecoming Game, so I'm very excited for that, against Man Valley. So mommy's going to have a little bit of a problem, but I'm excited for the event. This week is also National 4-H Week. We are blessed here in Carroll County to have a very involved 4-H and FFA community. Again, I always, you know, talk about 4-H in our FFA programs. Reach out to our Extension Office here in Carroll County and talk to them about joining a local 4-H club. Talk to your local high schools about joining the FFAs. They are open to everybody. I hope everyone enjoys their homecoming games, whether they already have them or they're getting ready to have them, and their dances, and be safe. All my Swifties out there, records were broken across the globe with TS-12. I have a feeling many teens are going to be finding a new interest in Shakespeare without knowing, they want to know, who's Ophelia? So to all those Swifties out there, turn up your favorite song, grab that orange-feathered boa, and dance like you're a showgirl. It is, kind of put a little plug in there, because I think I've enjoyed seeing many moms and daughters making connections this weekend, like going to see the movie and having some fun with that, so that was really cool to see.
This month is National Bullying Prevention Month. October's National Bullying Prevention Month, which aims to increase awareness and prevent the bullying of our children. Bullying comes in many forms, in our schools, in the community, and on social media, and its negative effects can last a lifetime. We all can help make a difference by identifying bullying behavior and supporting those who are bullied. If your child is being bullied at school, please contact the school counselor or school administrator to share your concerns and to work together to address the issue. And I always, always say is be kind. That's one of the main things you can do to help prevent bullying is just be kind. Dr. McCabe?
As the Board Members have mentioned, we had the honor of celebrating our Carroll County Teacher of the Year, Amy Glasscock, from Winfield Elementary School at the Maryland Teacher of the Year Gala on Friday, September 26th. We are so proud of Amy, and I know that she will do a fantastic job representing our school system during the coming year. Congratulations again, Amy. I also would like to bring to your attention two special events taking place next week that will be great opportunities for students and families as they make plans for the future. First, the Annual College and Career Fair will be held on Monday, October 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Carroll County Agricultural Center Shipley Arena. Approximately 100 colleges, universities, military, and trade schools will be represented. There also will be resources for scholarships and financial aid, and high school counselors will answer questions regarding college and career inquiries. The Career and Technology Center will host its annual open house for ninth and 10th-grade students on Thursday, October 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the tech center. Students and families are encouraged to come, explore, and learn about the many programs offered, and how to apply. And finally, this evening, later on the agenda, we will complete the purchase of the new lighting systems at Liberty and Westminster High Schools. We have discussed that situation many times already, but this evening I did want to recognize some of our staff members who made the very best of a difficult situation. The schools were flexible and patient in supporting our work first to remove the old lighting structures and then coordinating with us to install the new lights. The school administrators, athletic directors, coaches, and Mr. Michael Duffy, Supervisor of Athletics, all worked to find interim solutions and to adjust practice and game schedules. With their support and flexibility, we were able to have a permanent solution in place in just a few weeks. Lastly, I want to thank Mr. Ray Prokop, Director of Facilities Management, and his team, led by Mr. Joe Morningstar, Supervisor of Maintenance and Operations, and Mr. Dave Valentine, Assistant Supervisor of Maintenance. Once the solution was identified, they were able to lead the effort of our contractors and our maintenance staff to have the old lighting structures on the ground in just one day, and the new systems. one day, and the new systems operational in just a few weeks. I am aware that Mr. Valentine was working several days from 3:00 a.m. until into the night to oversee the completion of the project. I am very grateful for the dedication of all of these staff members for making the best of a difficult situation and supporting our student athletes.
All right. So, now we are moving on to presentations, and for Agenda Item 3A, we have Career and Technology Education.
We have two presentations this evening, both focused on career and technical education. First, for our instructional presentation, Mr. Wernick is here with our central CTE leaders to share some highlights from our CTE programs, to answer any questions, and to engage in any discussion with you. Mr. Wernick?
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to have our CTE team share an overview of our Career and Technology Education opportunities for our students. I first want to introduce our team. We have Mr. Bill Eccles, Supervisor of CTE, Mr. Ted McNatt, Assistant Supervisor of CTE, Ms. Lesi Chesley, Career Development and Program Specialist. And so, as we move into this presentation, we're just providing an overview of our opportunities available to all our students, and it's really just to increase the knowledge of all our stakeholders about our career pathways that are newly developed and some that we've had in the past, as well as our post-CCR connections that students can have. So, I'm actually going to turn it over now to Mr. McNatt to begin the presentation.
As you can see from the data on the slide, there are many options for Carroll County students to take a Career and Technical Education pathway to meet the graduation requirement, as well as opportunities for students to take a series of related courses that could lead to internships or apprenticeships. And a CTE pathway is a sequence of courses that prepares students for a specific career. Students can earn industry-recognized credentials or embedded college credits, depending on the program. About half of the CTE pathways are available at the comprehensive high schools and half at the Career and Tech Center. And the CTE team is constantly reassessing opportunities and programs to meet current and future needs of both the students and the workforce demands. Ms. Chesley will come up and talk about career development.
Good afternoon, everyone. One of the cornerstones of the Blueprint Law includes career development. The law specifically calls for a system of career development starting in sixth grade and progressing on all the way through high school. So, in Carroll County public schools, we had strong components already in place for career development embedded in the curriculum with our school counseling and with our career coordinators at the high school. So, we used that as a model, and we added dedicated career coaches at the middle school level, providing curriculum resources to explore in the sixth grade, connect in the seventh grade, and empower students in the eighth grade as they develop their personal career interests and plan for the future. At the high school level, counselors and coordinators round out the curriculum with continued career preparation, such as mock interviews and resume development, as well as opportunities for career-connected learning, like our apprenticeships and our internships. Finally, the Blueprint calls for a collaboration with our community partners in this work. So, that would be the Carroll County Workforce Development and Carroll Community College. Together, the three of us create coordinated opportunities and resources for our students, both on our campuses here at the schools, as well as throughout the community. This multifaceted approach equips students with tools to create a six-year plan that enables them to see themselves in a valuable role, starting in high school and moving beyond high school. And I will turn it to Mr. Eccles for the rest.
All right. So, I get the joy of talking about our successes. So, our CTE programs have had a lot of recent success. Increased student interest has led to the growth of the programs in the schools, as well as at the newly renovated and expanded Tech Center. We have further expanded our offerings through connections to programs at the Community College and through internships and apprenticeships in the community. Our Career and Technical Student Organizations have given a venue for our students to show leadership and to compete at local, state, and national events. We continue to be represented well in FBLA, FFA, as Ms. Pataglia said, and Skills USA. Our CTE teachers are tremendous as well. We have had several recognized as national master teachers and as state-level leaders. Recently, MSD put out a video recognizing those who have worked in industry and then come to teach, and two of our Tech Center teachers, Mr. Gordon Kenny and Mr. Brendan Gallagher, were featured in that video. Locally, we take pride in our community partnerships. We have many businesses who support us through our program advisory committees, the local advisory council, and by supporting our career development program. And although we've had a lot of successes, we also have challenges. So, we face increasing requirements from the AIB and the CTE Committee, such as the goal to have 45% of all of our graduating students earn an industry-recognized credential. Additionally, MSD has a new initiative to increase options for students within the CTE pathways, what they call the Flex Model. And that will require us to update and expand all 45 of our current pathways. Locally, we continue to strive to ensure program availability across all high schools, given scheduling and staffing constraints. And we also face a rapidly changing technological landscape with many new factors which impact our ability to plan and budget. And of course, we need to try to predict and react to student interest changes, because ultimately, this is all for the benefit of our students. So, with all that, we have a vision for the future. And so, we plan to increase our career development activities, as Ms. Chesley talked about, to continue to expand our pathway and program opportunities through partnerships, and also to add and modify our programs to meet the needs of our students and our industry partners. So, the changes that we're working on right now include adding a Vet Science Unit to our Case Animal Pathway in the high schools, adding ProStar, which is a restaurant management program, and hospitality and tourism management at select high schools, and then at the Tech Center, adding a Natural Resources Management Program and an Entrepreneurship and Small Business Program. So, we're making changes constantly as we get. So, that is our overview, and so at this time, we would be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions? Dr. Malvo?
More comment than questions, but I, there's one question, actually. With the overview of CTE, these are great comprehensive high school program areas, and I see agri-science on there as well, obviously with our county being, I think, second in the nation in terms of agricultural, per capita, and so forth. It's important to do, important to have in place. With the agri-science, is there any mention you could say in terms of the kinds of groups or companies that locally partner with our students in terms of the internships or apprenticeships that you may be able to share?
Well, I don't have a list off the top of my head, but we do have, many students go out on ag internships, and we've worked with local farms. We work with the Agribusiness Council of the county. We have several vets that host our students. So, we have quite a few students who are able to get out and do internships in the community in ag. So, our ag strands, we have Ag Animal, which focuses on the animal side, husbandry and veterinary, and Ag Plant, which focuses more on the agriculture and farming side.
That's great. Thank you. And I just want to say also, I think it's wonderful in terms of career development, the start through grade six, that early start, I think that's so key and important. Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, board members?
I just want to say thank you for everything. One thing I did want to ask about is, are we having any more success regarding apprenticeships? I know that's been something that's been a little difficult, because so many different type of industries require a certain age, and some of our students don't meet a certain age to do certain things. So, I was wondering how that is working, what they're doing, and possible changes they're trying to get made in some of the regulations regarding that.
So, we're working very closely with the Department of Labor and working to build both the understanding of our business community of the importance of apprenticeships and also the opportunities for students. We've had a lot of success with what we call youth apprenticeships, much less success with registered apprenticeships. And so, youth apprenticeships is designed for high school students to have an experience while they're in high school. They may or may not continue with the company after that term. Registered apprenticeship is the more traditional apprenticeship approach, where you would be working for the company and continue on for your apprenticeship for four or five years. We've had fewer companies interested in becoming a registered apprenticeship host, and so we haven't had a lot of growth there as of yet, but we continue to chip at it.
Perfect. Perfect. I do want to, again, want to thank you guys for everything you're doing. I know, you know, to your point, Dr. Malvo, a lot of the veterinarians in the county have been so incredible with the internships for, like, mostly our animal science kids that are in the FFAs and stuff. They have been incredible, and some of the stories I hear, like, the kids are like, "I didn't know, like, what that entailed." I won't go into details of some things.
It's not all just holding puppies.
It's not all just holding puppies. It's a lot of very hard things they have to see and hard decisions that people have to make. So, even with our nursing programs and tech and everything, I mean, we have an incredible jewel in this county, and I'm so thankful for all the work that you and your team are doing and the opportunities that we do have here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay. And Mr. Wernick and Mr. Eccles will stay with us to present our monthly Blueprint update now. You'll recall that while we wait for the final fiscal compliance outcomes with the AIB's consultants, we would provide the board with updates on other aspects of the work that we are undertaking with Blueprint implementation. Mr. Wernick and Mr. Eccles will highlight some aspects of Blueprint implementation related to CTE opportunities for our students.
Good evening again, board members. You just heard some of the CTE opportunities that we just shared, but we're actually going to go a little bit deeper into Blueprint Pillar 3, and some of the initiatives that we're working closely with the Workforce Development Board, as well as some of our CCPS initiatives within our system. So, I'm going to start and turn it over to Mr. Eccles to share some of our initiatives.
Thank you, Mr. Wernick. So, the Blueprint requires that we do our career development activities in partnership with Carroll County Workforce Development and also Carroll Community College. And so, we start through the Blueprint in looking at funding for our system of career development. That funding is determined by the AIB. This year, it's around $1.6 million. It's based on a per-pupil number. That funding supports the career counseling program for middle and high school students to be provided collaboratively with us and the Workforce Development Board, Community College, and other state and local agency. A major part of the MOU provides for the career coaching model at the middle schools, which Ms. Chesley, our Career Development and Program Specialist, is going to give you more details on. Ms. Chesley?
Well, as you just heard in the CTE presentation, the Blueprint emphasizes starting that career counseling piece much earlier and more comprehensively, specifically requiring that personalized instruction starting in the sixth grade. So, how this works with Carroll County Workforce Development is that our career coaches at CCPS work with every single middle school student, ensuring that they're making progress toward career and college readiness and choosing their high school pathways. And then there are navigators that are at Carroll County Workforce Development, and they support us in this effort with business context and with programming. So, the Blueprint objectives for this are called Explore, Connect, Empower. And how that plays out for Carroll County public schools is that we have progressive curriculum that goes in each year of middle school. So, in the sixth grade, students explore. They're looking at their strengths, their interests, their values, so that they can begin making decisions about their post-CCR pathways. And then in seventh grade, they connect with their careers more deeply. So, they're focusing on job skills, on soft skills, and on local and national industries and employers. And then finally, in eighth grade, the career team empowers students to develop their six-year plan, looking at their future in high school and beyond graduation. This also includes creating a career portfolio that they can start building in middle school and then take that and carry that on to high school with themselves. There's a lot of different activities that are involved in this. There are, of course, regular lessons to accomplish all of those things, but I want to highlight just a few of the activities that are happening around our schools. Most of the middle schools offer some sort of leadership lunch or career café. That is when students that have a common interest are pulled together for a smaller gathering, and we pull in industry experts for them. Dr. McCabe actually spoke last year to a small group of future educators, so that was a really fun connection for our program. Other examples include guest speakers. We do customized content with other curricular areas. We do hands-on activities, bringing equipment or industry into the school so that students can interact. And then there are larger events, which would include things like Career Days that are offered for eighth graders in the middle schools. And we do a What If Field Trip for seventh graders that may not have as many experiences so that they can imagine their future by getting their hands on equipment and real industry experts and touching and feeling a lot of different equipment and opportunities. Technology also plays a role in career counseling. All of the middle school students and teachers have access to career exploration software. It's called Pathful, and that's through our agreement with Carroll County Workforce Development. This software allows teachers to guide students in activities for their careers. It also allows the students to have a lot of choice and say in that, so students can also do career exploration on their own, and they can access that at their school in a flex lesson or something like that. But they can also access it at home, and some of our early data shows some of them actually are bringing that home and accessing that at home. Students can create journals in the software and start working on their career portfolios, too. One other thing that's been a really pleasant thing to have with the software is there's usage data from the software, so we can see trends with the students. We can also see emerging career fields that they're interested in, and the teachers have data so they know what they're looking for with their students and how to group them. And we can also use it as a strong complement to our AIB reporting requirements. So, the last note I have on the middle school career counseling is about the eighth-grade Career and Technology Center Field Trip. So, Ted talked earlier, about half of our career programs are at the comprehensive high schools, the other half largely those that have large equipment involved, or maybe a small cohort size, are going to be at the Tech Center. So, the eighth graders go on the Career and Technology Center Field Trip. It's a core activity. They get excited about it. It's near the end of their middle school program. Weeks of lessons go in so that teachers can figure out what they're interested in, so that they can have programs selected and go on rotation so they can see programs they are most interested in and that match their skills. This is a major milestone in planning for CCR pathways and a nice kind of capstone in their eighth-grade year. So, those are some of the highlights on the middle school career counseling that are happening in the schools. I do have one program I would also like to share that is happening in our high schools. So, the RISE program is Resume Instruction with Senior Educators, that is high school seniors, not seniors. So, this collaboration is happening with the Carroll County Workforce Development and with CCPS, and the Workforce Development provides staff, they provide the materials, they've done the whole training plan for everything that is involved there. We actually facilitate the program, though, in our high schools. And last year, we ran a successful pilot that ran throughout the school year last year. It was at Francis Scott Key. We had 12 students that went through this program, and it went very well. There was a lot of positive interaction that happened in it, so much so that we are expanding to three additional schools this year, and that includes our Gateway School. So, teachers recommend candidates for their ability to connect with other students. So, it can be a student from anywhere in the school on any kind of post-CCR pathway that they're looking for differentiated students to come in to work with other students that are going to have interests that connect. The selected RISE students attend training sessions throughout the fall semester to prepare them as mentors. And then by the end, they can assist the underclassmen with preparation for mock interview day. So, it's not just one day, it's thinking about how to put that resume together, their soft skills, and the interview preparation itself. The RISE mentors make a significant time commitment. They go to 11 training sessions in the fall to become trained, and then they visit with the advisories throughout the rest of the year to help the underclassmen. The RISE students learn a wide range of leadership and employability skills, and for all of this hard work, they are recognized at graduation. So, I am going to leave you all with a quote to read from one of our mentors, and I am going to turn the podium back over to Mr. Eccles for any questions. all of this hard work, they are recognized at graduation. So I am going to leave you all with a quote to read from one of our mentors, and I am going to turn the podium back over to Mr. Echols for any questions.
I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions? Ms. Zimmer?
Thank you for that presentation. I love that we're starting with sixth graders to explore and to connect with different pathways. I changed majors in college, so I'm curious, at what point is it too late to change pathways for our middle schoolers?
The middle schoolers are not locked into any pathway at all. They are choosing based on their own interests, but there's no expectation or obligation that they will stay with that. So when we say we connect them, that's not in any like locked-in kind of way. That's just as they express their interest of that week or that day or that moment, we connect them with more information about that. But there is absolutely no belief that a seventh grader is in any way ready to make decisions for the rest of their career.
So when does the locking in happen?
Well, I've changed careers several times as an adult, so I'm going to say never.
Right, okay.
So in high school, the limitations of the schedule make it so that you probably could not do multiple career development strands. But we don't require that a student who took a particular class in high school must work in that career. When I was in high school, I said that I was never going to be in education. I would not be a teacher at all.
And here you are.
And here I am.
So I guess, I guess, let me rephrase the question. At what point do you have to be locked in to complete the pathway?
Tenth graders in high school need to have made the scheduling decision to be part of a program in order to get it completed in their high school year. So 10th grade is really your answer.
My guess is by starting as early as we now are, you will see less college students like I was changing majors, so I think that's great. And then my second question, I apologize, it might be geared more toward the first presentation, and I should have asked it then. But as far as the dual enrollment, and now we have blueprint that is affording our students to do the dual enrollment included in their education, I'm curious, how are the class guidelines working? Are we sort of very specific about what classes we are that the blueprint is paying for? And can you talk to me a little bit about that?
Mr. Shokni is going to help me out.
We've got a friend here. Yes, so we have, we've developed a general studies pathway. If students in their 10th grade year could be pursuing their associate's degree towards that general studies program, or if a student, for example, wanted to take AP courses, wanted to participate in a CTE program, they can take dual enrollment courses, but it comes from, in a sense, that menu of courses on that general studies pathway. Those are the courses that we reimburse as long as that student has met the CCR standard. If a student hasn't met that CCR standard, they can still pursue those courses. They're just at the expense of the student and family. But to answer your question, I think it's going, I think it's going well. Our enrollment, our participation in dual enrollment, even with that prescribed pathway and menu, is up even from the previous year. So I think, you know, that tells me that it's working well.
That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
Mr. Whistler, I'm sorry if I didn't see your hand go up earlier, but I see you now.
No, you're fine. No, I just put it up. No, I appreciate that. Again, thank you for the presentation, everybody. You know, career and tech is something that we need to always focus on and never forget. It just, it's one of the most vital components that our students have, because not everybody should go to college. Not everybody wants to walk out of college with six figures of debt. So this is one of the most important things in our county, period. And I'm so glad that we have, in my opinion, out of the 24 LEAs in this state, nobody does it like Carroll County with regards to CTE, period. I'm very concerned that the funding for this career, you know, workforce development initiative ends after fiscal year '28. And so, you know, this may be something that we have to take out of hide if we want to continue it past '28. And so I'm really curious to know if we have any kind of things put in place to collect metrics on, you know, like, I'm very concerned that we're having kids take these CTE programs and then, you know, do they use them after they leave high school? Is there anything in place to help us discern whether or not, you know, we should modify our policy? Because again, you know, we rely on attendance, we rely on grades, and, you know, some of the complaints I'm hearing is that we have some of our kids that maybe they're destined for college, but they're taking a lot of the CTE courses that maybe some of our kids that are middle of the road and, you know, maybe CD students should be taking. But is there something in place to help us discern the success of what we're doing now and how it will, you know, be looked at later, and if we should take money out of hide to keep this going after '28 if the state doesn't step in and provide more funding?
Mr. Whistler, I'll take the first part about continuity of funding or program and defer the questions of metrics and successes to my other colleagues. We were mindful headed into, headed into the blueprint agreement with workforce development that, it was clear that the intent of the blueprint was that the early years would be in partnership with workforce development, but that the programming would then continue over, over the course of the full range of blueprints. So our MOU with, with local workforce development board recognized that and, and shifts some of the funding back to the Board of Ed for the career counselors at the middle school level. So, so we, essentially, those positions are programmed into the school system's operations to continue beyond the window of time of the MOU. So that, that was kind of, sort of considered from the onset, and as for the rest?
Mr. Whistler, we actually do exit surveys, so when a student's getting ready to graduate, we actually look at where they're going and what field they're going into and how it connects with the education that they've had for Carroll County. And then, ironically, we have a lot of students who come back and either provide presentations in the field that they either left us in or are in or are college, you know, within their courses within college. So although, because we don't know where our students are, to provide them with an actual survey outside of, you know, when they get into their career or college, we do, and totally know that most of them do use the skills that they've learned within a career or in their college, you know, setting.
I was going to say, Mr. Whistler, kind of piggyback off of you a little bit. I know for years I had asked so many questions regarding the process of getting into career and tech. Like, were we looking at every student? Were we actually paying attention to like what a kid may be interested in and they're fit? Are we, you know, making sure we weren't overseeing certain things? And I'm very happy with the outcomes that have, you know, a couple of things I think were tweaked a little bit more, but the outcomes have been incredible, especially after the modernization, that we've had a little bit more room to expand things. And I know, just as a mom, when I go over there, well, okay, let me rephrase this. As a board member, when I go over there, but I peek into a classroom as a mom, I see all the different classes, like, you can tell this is where the kids want to be, and you can, you can kind of definitely identify the welding kids from the criminal justice program kids, just by their demeanors, just by, you know, everything that they have involved in with those courses. So I, I think it's so incredible that we are doing a really good job in making sure the kids are getting in. Culinary program, I mean, it's a very diverse population of students over at career and tech, and I think we've done an incredible job. But, Mr. Whistler, yes, I've brought those things up so many times in questions regarding it. And I think definitely with the expanding the career tech, that definitely helped a lot, getting more kids in.
And I would just add to that that, I would just add to that that, you know, even if a student doesn't necessarily pursue the exact program that they're in, it doesn't necessarily mean that the skills they learned there aren't going to be beneficial. And, you know, just a personal anecdote to that, I attended a comprehensive career and tech high school, and my program was business. And then I promptly went to college and became an education major and thought I would never use any of the business skills that I learned in career and tech. But as it turns out, I did. And so my path kind of zigzagged like I think a lot of people's paths. And so you, you never know when you're going to use those skills. And oftentimes, the, the programs that our students are attracted to, they are attracted to because, because they, students are naturally good or skilled in those areas. And so as they grow into adults and they explore careers, oftentimes, they, they do attract to careers that use those, that same knowledge and skill that they were gifted or knowledgeable in as youngsters. So, so yeah, kids can, can use the education in lots of different ways.
I think too a lot, even if it's like, they do the first choice and second choice. And a lot of times, even if they don't get in their first choice, let's say their first choice is welding, they end up getting into collision repair as their second. Those things actually, a lot of times, they work together because they have to figure out how to weld the different parts to go back on a vehicle, same with heavy-duty diesel mechanic. I mean, so many of them actually like work around each other. So I think, I think as a system, we've done an incredible job of making sure we're identifying the kids. And even if they don't meet the requirements to get into career and tech, I think our career coaches have done a really good job trying to connect them with something else to get them, get them involved in something. We've done great with that. Dr. Dorsey, did you have any comments?
Just kudos. I mean, I think we've got such an exceptional set of programs that we offer through career and tech. And I guess my mind is just going back to my elementary kids and knowing, you know, little kids come in saying what they want to be or what they'd like to do when they grow up. I see we've got something very structured by the time we get to sixth grade, but I'm wondering, you know, what are we sort of doing at the elementary level to acknowledge that, yes, this is what you're saying you'd like to do? And, I mean, we know it's going to be happening when they get to middle school as far as, you know, exploring the different areas, but what can you tell me about elementary?
Sure. That really starts in our social studies programs, you know, when, when even in pre-K, they begin to learn about their community, about community helpers, about how families work. And so it really broadens their mind on what they may want to do. Learning centers as well and stations where students can read about different programs, jobs within, you know, that's developmentally appropriate. And so it starts in social studies, as well as our counselors go into our classrooms and also provide some of that support when they're doing their lessons. So it's really wraparound where we technically start in pre-K, but it's not per se career development. It's really just broadening their understanding of what does the community look like and need as helpers.
And as I'm hearing you respond, I think I've asked this question in the past because, again, it's sort of coming back now, some of the ways that you've responded. And I can just remember years ago, we used to have more of a structured program, and I will really date myself here, but there was a program, Career Awareness Now, Dawn Abbey and staff, I mean, they would come into the elementary level at a certain grade level and explore different careers with the students. So I hear that again, you know, in their either counseling lessons or social studies lessons, you know, we're certainly, again, helping them explore some possibilities for themselves. Every time I think of the, the tech center and everything that's offered there, I'm just so sorry I can't recycle my kids and have them come back and take at least one of those programs, because again, they're also very valuable. So thank you so very much.
Board members, any other, Dr. Malve, did you have a question or comment?
Just a quick question, and I know a number of my colleagues have engaged in this as well with your RISE program, aside from resume development, that the students come in for the mock interview days, and that's a lot of fun for us to, to interview these students, you know, as part of that. They come dressed up, prepared, pretty much, you know, resumes all, all in order, but different levels of, of skills with the interview, you know, in terms of eye contact and articulation and so forth. What do you do, I just wondered, to prepare them for that stage with the mock interviews?
So we start in the middle school, having the students think about the soft skills that will help you be successful. And so they'll do optional practice mock interviews with the students. When we bring in our business partners to meet with the students, we practice that eye contact, introducing yourself. And then in high school, we have structured lessons that lead up specifically to the mock interviews and talk to the students about how do you present yourself? How do you answer the questions? I actually sat in on a lesson this morning. One of our career coordinators was talking to the students in preparation of that, and we talked about how the interview starts before you're sitting at the table, right? How you walk up, how you carry yourself as you enter the room is a factor in how you'll be seen by that interviewer. So, you know, we have structured, specific lessons to it, and then we also practice, right? We have the mock interviews, and then they give feedback. And maybe the mock interview went tremendously well, and we can be proud of that, or maybe there was an issue, and we can help the student then think about how they could do it better the next time, have another practice for them if that's appropriate, or, you know, have them, as they connect to that college interview, that scholarship interview, that job interview, how do you prepare yourself for that specifically, right? So we have our career counselors at the high school, and then we also have our partners at workforce development are very willing to help students with that.
And what's really nice is that it doesn't even stop at the interview stage. After the interview, when I gave feedback to the students in terms of how it went, I was shocked for them to then send thank yous to me and notes to me after. So it's, it's really interesting how it, it's well done.
It is a whole process. And we always need people to help with the interviews. So if you would like to help with our mock interviews, contact the career coordinator at the high schools, they would be glad to sign you up.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys so much. Thank you. Next up, we have our school construction report. Dr. McCabe?
The monthly school construction report provides updates on projects we have in design or construction. Later this evening, the board will be asked to take action on six of these projects. Mr. Prokop is available for any questions you may have.
Anybody have any comments or questions? I think Mr. Prokop is anxiously waiting to hear from us later. He smiles. Thank you. All right. We will move now on to public comments. Mr. Whistler, do you have your statement, or would you like someone else to read it?
I do, I have the statement. I'm not sure how many speakers we have this evening.
We have two speakers.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure of the names of the speakers, but I'll read the obligatory thing that the lawyers make us read. To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers with a connection to CCPS will be allowed to address the board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have registered online and have been notified by the communications department will be permitted to speak. Priority will be given to those citizens that are addressing the board about an item on the current agenda. Citizens not appearing in person for a public comment can write to the board through email or US mail. Public participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the public participation, period. Statements to the board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. The board has scheduled time on the agenda for public participation at approximately 5:15 PM. Very close. The board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. Additionally, the board retains the discretion to allow speakers, additional speakers as it deems appropriate. The board is allowing no more than an hour for public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or to board members. Madam President, I'll rely on you or another colleague to call speakers to the podium.
First, we will have Ms. Lisa. First, we will have Ms. Lisa Massiano.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Massano, and I have three children in CCPS. I attended the joint meeting of the BOE and commissioners in September and was encouraged by the discussion regarding future capital projects. The two boards discussed investigating a new site to replace Freedom Elementary as part of a longer-term plan, rather than spending money now for an addition on a site that is insufficient. While I understand questioning further investment into the current site, I am concerned that it will be many years before Freedom Elementary can be addressed, given the list of priorities for facility modernizations. In this year's ranking, Liberty High is first in modernization priority, whereas Freedom is number 12. I question how many years it will realistically take for CCPS to work its way down the list to Freedom? 20 years or more? Would it make sense to spend 8.6 million now on Freedom Elementary to improve the situation for likely another generation of students that will attend in the current building? I was intrigued by the idea of a regional center where Eldersburg Elementary would teach pre-K and K students who are districted to Freedom. We should consider all area, all ideas that may be cost-effective temporary solutions to provide relief until a new Freedom Elementary can be built. Additionally, I want to address Sykesville Middle, the building that ranks third on the modernization priority list. Originally built in 1932, the existing school is on a site smaller than is the current standard for middle schools, and the planned addition is in question because enrollment has not grown as expected. The Delaney property, a site across the street from Century High, came up at the joint meeting as a site that was originally purchased by the county for new schools. Century and Linton Springs were built on the site, which happens to be in the Sykesville Middle District, and presumably the rest of the site was intended for a replacement middle school. However, during their open session tomorrow, the commissioners will be briefed and will consider transferring that 78 acres of county-owned land to the Industrial Development Authority for development as an employment campus. I plan to attend the commissioners' meeting tomorrow to ask that they pause the transfer of the land until they can reevaluate if that land would be needed for a replacement Sykesville Middle. I encourage the BOE to continue the dialogue with the commissioners on a long-term plan to meet the needs of CCPS. At a minimum, the BOE, CCPS, and the community should push the county to fund the Liberty High School feasibility study, so work can begin on the highest priority modernization, even if the Freedom and Sykesville additions are paused for further evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, uh, Mr. Gary Foot.
Good evening, board members. This is the middle of Nobel Prize week. Perhaps you were too busy following the life of a showgirl to notice. I'd like to point out that the Nobel Prizes were first awarded the year my grandparents were born. At that time, life expectancy in the United States was 47 years. Students lucky enough at the time to be in high school, uh, weren't teenagers. They were approaching middle age. One of the early Nobel Prizes was awarded for the discovery of the electron. This used to be research at the cutting edge. Now, elementary school students make atomic models, including protons, neutrons, and electrons, starting in third grade. This, uh, discovery of the electron turned out to be one of the most useful discoveries in the history of science. Understanding electron configuration is the starting point for understanding chemistry, biology, and material science. Whatever electronic device you were using even as we speak, it works because someone was able to understand and control electron behavior. Researchers at that time, of course, knew none of this. They were simply doing their part to help us answer a question as old as time itself. What are we made out of and what holds it together? Sadly, as a country, we seem no longer interested in funding this kind of curiosity. Yesterday's award for physics was given to experiments, uh, that uncovered still more surprising electron behavior. Most likely, in the future, this work will be done somewhere else. As I was rereading the introduction to an old textbook, I came across the story of the discovery of metal oxide semiconductor, conductor field effect transistors. No, I don't understand exactly how they work either, but I do know they are the reason almost every electronic device created in the last 50 years can function. This discovery was made by an Egyptian scientist and a Korean scientist collaborating in, of all places, a laboratory in New Jersey. Unfortunately, it is unlikely this kind of collaboration could occur in 2025. If these scientists were students, their visa applications would likely be denied. If they already lived in the United States, they quite likely would be deported. And yes, this is exactly what many of you voted in this room, voted for in the last election. I hope you will think again. Or would you rather roll, uh, back 150 years of progress and endorse an Orwellian worldview where two plus two equals five?
All right, thank you for our public speakers. Next, we have our employee groups. And just real quick, I see a C, a whole room of green. I'm wearing my green because it's four each week. Just letting you know.
Good evening Superintendent McCabe and members of the Board of Education. I am Cindy Porter, a special education paraprofessional and president of CASE, representing clericals and assistants working in our school system. In the past few months, I have spoken to the efforts of community members and organizations coming together for the benefit of students in our school system. Community members became more involved this past spring when financial situations and law compliance brought about a unique situation in our county and for our students. This fall, our community organizations rallied to support students in our county with back-to-school necessities, and several of our schools have food pantries to help support our students and their families all during the school year. The tagline for the logo of our school system is "Building the Future." Now, more than ever before, we're beginning to understand that as a school system, even though we are an important part, we are just part of that process. In the first six weeks of this school year, I see educators and staff members across our school system with packed schedules and increasing demands continuing to rise above to meet the needs of all of our students. And while the academic needs of our students are at the forefront of what we do every day, we continue to be asked to step in and assist with the many other growing needs of our students. I can't help but wonder how long this effort can be sustained. There have been voices in our community calling for a return to, back to the basics. As an educator myself, I would like to see our community help with a return to the basics. The basics of respect for others in our school buildings, of support for those who are struggling, and of a willingness to look for the best in people rather than looking for things to divide us. Robert Ingersoll said, "We rise by lifting others." While educators and staff in our school system come to work each day with that in mind, we know that we are only a part of what is needed to truly make our students successful. It is so important for the parents and members of our community to continue to be involved so we can bring all of those necessary components together to build a future of opportunity and access for our students. Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent McCabe and board members. I am Celeste Jordan, President of the Carroll County Education Association. Today marks 403 days since August 31st, 2024, the date the educators in the CCA bargaining unit last, received their last salary increase. Every day educators are asked to be more than teachers, they're mentors, counselors, social workers, data analysts, mediators, and sometimes even first responders in emergency situations. They're doing their best, often staying late, giving up vital planning time, and sacrificing personal time just to meet the needs of our students in CCPS. The issue is in lack of dedication, it's a lack of bandwidth. With every new initiative form or meeting gets added on top of the existing responsibilities, something has to give. And often, it's the educator's time, physical, or mental health. We talked about educator retention, burnout morale, but these aren't abstract problems, they're symptoms of chronic overload. So the question isn't just how can educators do more, it's what can we take off their plates? Maybe it means reexamining redundant paperwork or streamlining data collection. Maybe it means rethinking meeting requirements or administrative tasks that do not directly serve our students. Or perhaps it's time to pause new initiatives until we ensure the current ones are sustainable. If everything is a priority, truly nothing is. Because when educators are stretched too thin, students feel it. An educator who is overwhelmed cannot give their best to instruction, creativity, or connection. Protecting educators' time is protecting instructional quality. It's protecting our students' right to rich, a rich and engaging education. This isn't about doing less, it's about doing what matters most. If we truly value our educators, we must prioritize their time as fiercely as we prioritize test scores and new programs. Let's commit to cutting what doesn't serve students, protecting planning time, and restoring balance to the profession, because the success of our schools depends on the sustainability of our dedicated educators.
Thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to the agenda for action items. Uh, the first one is 6A, Acceptance of Independent Audit Report, fiscal year 25. Do I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Malvo. And second by Dr. Dorsey. Dr. McCabe.
State education law requires each local Board of Education to have an annual audit of its financial transactions and accounts conducted by an independent qualified auditor firm. The annual audit occurs after the prior fiscal, fiscal year is closed out. The results are reviewed by staff and by the audit committee. We then bring the audit to the board for you to accept. I am pleased to report that we have a clean audit report this year.
Mr. Whistler.
Yeah, I, thank you, Madam President. Again, as the board's rep to the audit committee, I urge my colleagues to, um, vote in favor of this action. Again, um, fantastic work by our staff, by Mr. Burke and the team there, Stuart Turner, our, our chairman of the audit committee, uh, but, um, you know, they, they, they turn over lots of rocks and stones to find things that are not appropriate, and they keep turning, and there's nothing there. So, great job to our administrators, uh, every one of our schools. Uh, this team goes out and audits everybody, every school system, every, uh, account in every school, and, um, and, uh, our CLA findings support that. So thanks again, and I urge you to, uh, vote in favor of the, of the motion.
Any other comments or questions? All right, board members, a call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, we have 6B. Approval of Award of Bids. Dr. McCabe. Oh, no, actually, sorry. Can I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Dorsey. And a second by Mrs. Zimmer. Dr. McCabe.
There are three items on the Award of Bids this evening. First is the procurement card services. Uh, this award is for a new contract for procurement card services for the system with J.P. Morgan Chase. The procurement card service program will provide efficiencies and, and small purchases for those employees who are designated to have P cards. Second, we have stadium lighting at Westminster High School and Liberty High School. This award is to complete the procurement for the installation of the new stadia lighting at both of those schools. We have discussed the situation at several recent meetings, including the recent joint meeting with the commissioners. This action will finalize all of that work. And then finally, uh, we have HVAC equipment. Last year, the board assigned some fund balance to address HVAC and roofing needs in this building. This purchase is for the equipment to begin the HVAC upgrade for half of this building. We will define a construction plan and schedule that brings the least amount of disruption to our operation as possible.
Board members, comments or questions? Ms. Zimmer.
Yes, I, I just had a question about the stadium light, stadia lighting. I've had a lot of people in the community who are thrilled that it happened so fast, but along with that came, um, where in the budget, where, did we find that, um, to find those funds in an emergency situation like that?
Sure. Uh, the, uh, the funds came from our infrastructure renewal account, which, uh, is a project that was started in 2018, uh, and came from, uh, fund balance transfers, you know, each fiscal year since then to, uh, allow us to address just these sorts of issues. So the same, uh, we use, uh, the same infrastructure renewal project for recent chiller, uh, purchases and for chiller overhauls, uh, numerous projects that have come before you to, to address those, uh, uh, those issues that come on us quickly, emergency type, type concerns. Some things where we plan, it's usually, a lot of times it goes in, you know, it happens, uh, sort of under the radar. It, a lot of the things we do are behind the scenes, but it, when it leads to, to creature comforts in the buildings, that's, that's, that's the payoff.
So because of that account, we were able to make it happen quickly without having to go to the commissioners, am I, to move the money? Am I understanding that correct?
That's correct. We, we, uh, have flexibility within a project, but transfer from project to project requires the Board of Education to make a request to the Board of County Commissioners, and they need to agree to have those, those funds moved. So, yes, that flexibility, having that money in a project, that's, uh, that gives us that sort of flexibility to be able to respond as quickly as we did.
I'm grateful that we had that money there to make it happen, especially in the light of homecoming games and all the important things. So thank you.
Mr. Whistler.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, and I'm following my colleagues' line of thought. Um, uh, yeah, I, I was curious, and, and I saw it came out of category seven, which is fine. The question I have is, um, you know, we always have projects in the pipeline, even with that category seven money. Can you tell me what kind of things may be, may be preempted and, and that we were going to use? I mean, again, we're talking 100 grand per light post here. Again, worth every penny, if you ask me. But what kind of projects are going to be preempted or moved or bumped that we were anticipating using those funds for? Can, can you give us kind of a highlight or a, or description of, of, of what we need to put off because of these lights?
Well, I'm sorry. Board members, a couple of you are anticipating a subject of discussion coming up on the first discussion item on the agenda, the FY '27 budget, um, operating budget discussion. One of the items we wanted to highlight there was the current status of fund balance. And then the working example that I intend to use when we get to that point in the agenda is the very thing you're talking about, Ray's, uh, local CIP project for infrastructure renewal. So there's, I'll let Ray answer if he has some specifics in mind, but there's an endless list of known and still unknown, um, maintenance projects that exist or are going to exist. And since fiscal 18, we have been, you, the Board of Ed, have been funding these projects through the use of either annual surplus or fund balance being shifted into a local CIP project account. And so when we reach the, it, to, to me, I, I understand the questions from the community, and we'll try to address those as best we can, but the, kind of the bigger picture coming up tonight is when we reach a state, a state where we find ourselves now, where we've kind of worked fund balance down through legitimate uses, but we work fund balance down to the low end of your fund balance policy, there is not more money now to, to try to, to try to continue this approach we've been under since fiscal 18 of, of basically running an operational aspect of the school system through the transfer periodically of one-time capital money. Um, so it's, it is a question of what else might Ray have to now reprioritize this year, but it's a bigger question of, of what can we now do to move forward with our operations in general? Because, um, we, we've basically, through the, through the, you know, the decade that Dr. McCabe has often spoke of, the $40 million in cuts, we cut somewhere north of $2 million. In my mind, it was $2.5 million out of, out of Ray's operational budget category seven. And we, and, and it was meant to be temporary, and we hoped and dreamed we would eventually bring that money back into the budget, but we were never able to. And we tried to take the approach that in the interim, we'll, we'll deal with that, we'll deal with those needs by moving surplus when we can into this local infrastructure renewal project. But, you know, if you want to look at it that way over time, we traded $20 million, 2.5 million out of the operating budget that was used for this kind of work, times all of the fiscal year since, for I think about 11. In the, in those same years, you, the Board of Ed, have been able to move about 11 million. In those same years, you, the Board of Ed, have been able to move about $11 million into this local CIP project account for all of these kinds of things that come up and some other things Ray can plan for. But that's been the trade-off, and now we're, now we reach a point where we're not at a place where we can really say to you in good faith, let's move a little more fund balance into that project. So, I don't know what you have left, less than a million in that project, correct?
Right, about $800,000.
Yeah. And just to, to your question, in the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, there are projects listed as operational projects that would be the type of projects that would, that could fall off or fall later. And then there are the projects that are, that are emergencies, that we don't know to, you know, that things might fail that we have to replace. So, there's, there are specifics in the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan that can be, that can be pointed out. There's also, you know, other things we're doing associated with security that we would, that we might be putting infrastructure renewal money towards too, but we don't want to get into those details here.
Yeah, again, my concern is, is that, you know, that, you know, the use of these funds are going to preempt other things we have going on, like, you know, forecasted roof replacements or HVAC replacements, or, you know, the fund we have set aside for those emergencies. But, yeah, I appreciate the information.
Yeah, the...
Not that, though, Mr. Whistler.
Right. The projects that we have listed in the capital plan won't be preempted by the funds that we were, in our infrastructure renewal project. Those are sep, so it is separate.
Those are capital funds, right. But I'm just curious, again, just trying to get an idea of what might be delayed or preempted because we moved 400,000, well, we moved $800,000, which is a lot of money. So, I'm just trying to get an idea of what might be preempted or delayed because of this movement of money.
What it, what it basically means is that we have less and less fund balance to go to when emergencies happen. So, you know, this, this, this money came from fund balance, and, you know, that's not the way that we prefer to pay for things, because we need to keep approximately 3% in fund balance for emergency situations. And because we are where we are, we are below our goal of having 3% set aside in fund balance. So, what we don't know is what emergencies are going to come next, you know, that we may need, that we may need funding for. So, it's, it's not a great position for us to be in.
And if you look at...
Right, and we have a tradition, I'm sorry, we have a tradition also of replenishing that fund balance in our next year's budget. So, you know, that's going to put some more budgetary pressures on us for the next fiscal year, because again, we have a history, and rightfully so, of replacing what we use in fund balance and putting that in the next year's budget. So, but again, I appreciate the explanation.
That last point, Mr. Whistler, is exactly the point, you know, I was trying to focus on for the bud, for one aspect of the budget discussion tonight. But to be clear to everyone in the public, the use of this money for this emergency out of that single project account does not impact the roof, the roofing projects, the HVAC projects, modernization projects, paving projects, the other categories, the other CIP projects in the plan. And then Ray can point you to sort of an inventory of the kinds of things he...
Yeah, on page 31 of the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, which is coming up later this evening for approval, there are some examples of the types of projects that we would, we'd be focusing that, those funds from infrastructure renewal towards. And those are the sorts of things that may have to be deferred.
All right. Anything?
I just had, yes, I just had one question, if it's okay? And that's concerning the procurement cards. What's the limit or the amount?
Maybe Mr. Burke should...
Okay. I'm just wondering for administrators and staff, what their limit is.
Right, so we have a procedure manual that outlines that. I don't have it off the top of my head, but basically, we outline the types of positions that are eligible for procurement cards and the limits that are appropriate. I want to say generally ranges somewhere between, say, 2,000 to 5,000, with some who have some big materials needs up into 10,000 or 15,000.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? All right. 6B passes unanimously. Next, we have 6C, Approval of the High School Program of Studies for 2026, 2027. Do I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Malvo. Hold on a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Zimmer. Dr. McCabe.
Last month, these proposed changes to the High School Program of Studies were brought for Board discussion, and now they return for approval. Once adopted, they will be implemented in the 2026, 2027 school year. Mr. Wernick is available for questions or comments.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, just as a question, general question, how do students give ideas or opinions about new classes or changes to new one? I understand that some classes may be discontinued due to lack of interest or attendance, but like, how do you guys choose what, like, new classes are added?
Absolutely. We look at interest, again, from teachers as well as from the students. So, usually, the students will provide, you know, certain interest to their teachers. We also look sometimes at Student Government Association. The SGA sometimes gives us some feedback as well with Mr. Melhorn. And then we also look at, you know, what's trending either within college or careers to really reinforce the skills that are needed within the workforce and within college. So, it's multifaceted.
All right. Dr. Malvo.
I just want to comment, and piggybacking on what was just said, some of the courses, yeah, it's a head-scratcher for me in understanding why those courses would be eliminated. Okay, maybe there's not as much currency with the position, but for example, with world languages, American Sign Language Four, and reading the description of that class, that also the course is designed to help those who are looking for a career in signing and sign language. And I would think that that's something that's necessary and not something that's...
Correct. And what we did was, instead of it being a half-credit, it's now a full-credit, because we found out that you can't have, there's too much content for it to be a half-credit and to really teach students well.
Good.
So, some of these courses that were half-credit, we either moved to full-credit or were changed slightly, which means that we have to then discontinue one course to add another.
Oh, so modified, not really eliminated, but modified.
Correct, correct.
Agreed. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? I see Mr. Whistler with their thumbs up. Passes unanimously. Next, we have 6D, Approval of Curriculum Guide Implementation for 2025, 2026. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Dr. Malvo. Dr. McCabe.
Also, last month, we brought these proposed curriculum guide changes that were piloted in the prior school year. Mr. Wernick is again available for any questions.
Board members, do we have any questions or comments? Mr. Whistler, okay? Do you...
So, I just wanted to ask if, are students able to provide feedback on these changes before it happens? Like, is this, like, publicly available or advertised to students in schools?
The curriculum revisions?
Yeah.
So, yes, curriculum revisions are piloted at certain schools. They're actually piloted for a year, so they were piloted last year, the entire time. So, what we do is, we normally receive feedback from the teachers through, based on how it's taught. So, teachers usually will talk to students, you know, through that, and then we talk to our teachers to see what changes are actually needed. They are usually curriculum tied, so they're usually tied to new frameworks or new standards within the state. Absolutely, and anybody can use the feedback process on the website. That's a great point.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, a call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Passes unanimously. Next, we have Item 6E, Approval of Proposed FY '27 Capital Budget and FY '28 through FY ' '32 Capital Improvement Plan Request. Do I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Malvo.
Second.
Second by Ms. Zimmer. Dr. McCabe.
Last month, we brought for discussion the proposed CIP. We had discussion at the September meeting and then at the joint meeting with the Commissioners. We focused a lot of discussion on the two projects for additions at Freedom Elementary School and Sykesville Middle School. Tonight, the CIP returns for your action, including any further discussion or decisions you wish to make regarding any of the projects.
All right. Board members, first I'll go with Ms. Zimmer.
Okay, great, thank you. Last week, I shared with the County Commissioners that, given the recent shift in enrollment projections for the southern area, I believe that it would be responsible to pause the Freedom Elementary and Sykesville Middle projects and reprioritize them in 2028. When these projects were first approved, the data indicated growth. However, we are now seeing a trend of declining enrollment with hundreds of available seats in the southern area projected by 2029. In addition to declining enrollment, Freedom Elementary's limited footprint, combined with its location on Route 32 and existing traffic challenges, it makes the expansion less than ideal at this time. Sykesville Middle also faces uncertainty around state funding due to the same declining enrollment projections, which could leave Carroll County responsible for the full cost of the project. Before committing to significant local funds, we should take time to reassess long-term enrollment patterns, facility capabilities, and other options. This pause would allow for us to make more informed decision that ensures fiscal responsibility and lines with the community's actual needs. At the appropriate time, I would like to make a motion that we pause both. Again, at the appropriate time.
I'm going to run through their comments. Mr. Whistler?
No, again, I think that's a valid motion to amend, and I second her motion to amend withdrawing Items Number Two and Three. I think it's completely appropriate.
Okay. I don't, were you making the motion now, or are you waiting for...
At the appropriate time.
Okay, all right. So, hang on, Mr. Whistler. She said at the appropriate time, she was going to come back, circle back and make a motion for it. She wanted to hear everyone's comments first.
No worries.
Okay. All right. Dr. Malvo.
And I would support that pause for a year. I wouldn't want to delay it for long. I think it is important that this school, Freedom, get the modernization they need, however that should look, but I think that a pause for a few reasons. I know that the backdrop for us is to consider, how do we make sure that our students get the proper education they need, the proper environment for that to be most conducive? And so, I kind of had talked to Ed about this as well in terms of, well, what do the numbers look like? Let's look at this a little bit. And typically, it's November where they give a report in terms of the ratio, classroom size as average. So, it's a month away, the next report. So, I looked at last year's, which was also telling. So, the average student classroom size at Freedom Elementary, how does it compare to other schools in the county, right? I want to look at that. And so, in looking at that, the average classroom size for an elementary school in our county is about 20, or it is 23.3 students. At Freedom Elementary, the average classroom size is 23.2. So, it's on par with other elementary schools, and it's even a little bit more beneficial for Sykesville Middle. Average school classroom size at, and the county is 25.7 students per classroom. At Sykesville Middle, it's 23.2. So, there isn't a feel for immediacy of, we must, you know, expand right now. I would be okay to give it a year with some of the data that it shows. Certainly, there are other reasons beside classroom size. Other factors, which we've talked about a little bit, is the increased county costs that we're incurring, site constraints, you know, Freedom Elementary, nine acres, what can be done in terms of that, Route 32 and closing it, so you, you know, have to work with that. Enrollment changes, we expect, we don't know, in a year. So, why not wait a year and see if enrollment changes, if it goes up okay where it is now? It seems stable. And just even our evolving understanding of the blueprint. The blueprint had us all very concerned, you know, how many positions would be lost, what were the things that we'd have to sacrifice? And we got through that, and we're in a good situation, a decent situation with that in terms of the jobs and so forth. So, for all those reasons, I do support also maybe a pause and giving it a year.
Dr. Dorsey, do you have any comments?
Well, I'll make a couple, just to sort of go along with the thinking that's already been shared. I guess when we look at the current situation, it would probably make more sense at this point because of the amount of dollars that would be needed. It would make more sense just to put a pause on things. I think we've, you know, talked about certainly wanting to do something for Freedom Elementary, especially because of their, their facility. I mean, we need to acknowledge that it certainly needs a lot of work, it needs to be updated. We know that the numbers have changed. But again, it's like I shared at the joint meeting, I mean, we certainly do have concerns with the actual site that Freedom Elementary is located on. So, I think at this particular time, if we can sort of buy some more time so that when we do make a decision to help Freedom, it will be in the best way possible, and it will make the most sense of the dollars that are going to be needed. With Sykesville, again, you know, having served on that Planning Committee, I mean, there are a lot of great plans in place for what that facility can become with the addition. But again, if the numbers aren't exactly supporting that at this point, again, I would feel comfortable, you know, putting a pause on that as well. As much as I'd like to see some help for both those schools, I think it would probably be most judicious if we would wait.
I have to agree with everyone. You know, I know I said at the joint meeting, like, I was probably the one of different opinion, because I wanted to move forward, but after, you know, taking some more time, looking at things, looking at the numbers, going back, and believe it or not, I do have records from 10 years ago, looking at projections, and just kind of thinking, like, all right, you know, even with the addition, for Freedom, there was no guarantee of even getting rid of the portables, which was always one of my biggest concerns, and I hate portables more than anything. So, I, you know, even with that addition, those would probably still have to remain. So, I do have to agree potentially of looking at a pause for Freedom and Sykesville, just temporary, seeing what else we could look at potentially doing. I also do want to see us do something with Liberty High School, potentially there, you know, taking a look there. I mean, I'm glad that we're in a good place in our school system where we do have a plan in place, because there was many, many years that the school system didn't have plan in place to do, to do things, and we saw some of our schools really suffer for that. So, I am very glad that we have plans in place to look at things, and we know projections can change and everything, but I do think, again, you know, pausing, we don't know what, you know, again, with the charter school, we don't know what may happen. We don't know what may happen with the population. So, I'll just leave it at that. Mr. Whistler, did you have a comment before I handed it over to Ms. Zimmer?
Sure, yeah. I didn't have, I didn't give, I didn't really give my reasons, and I'd like to, because I want to make sure the public understands my line of thinking, and I think it falls in line with my colleagues. It is, we have a far greater likelihood of getting more state money... It is, we have a far greater likelihood of getting more state money to improve the situation at Freedom and Sykesville ultimately. If we, you know, consider other actions like a replacement than you do with expansion. Expansion requires a lot more local money to get it done, whereas replacement, you get a lot more state money to do that. So that's, that's number one. Number two, with the lowering enrollment, we don't have as dire a situation as we thought we had. And so while it is not comfortable or convenient at Sykesville and Freedom, the trajectory that we thought we were on is just not there. So I definitely think it's a much better idea to wait and see how the enrollment numbers shake up. And then additionally, if this proposition for a charter school comes into play, we see the potential of schools in the southern area, you know, transplanting students from some of those schools into this new charter school. And so that might have an effect on the enrollment figures at Freedom and Sykesville. So there's a lot of moving parts to this, in addition to blueprint and our staffing models that we may need to see. So again, I just, I don't want the public to think that we're just shooting from the hip here. There's a lot that's going into this, and I appreciate the work of staff and our colleagues to think about what might be best, both short and long term, for these schools.
All right. Well, Ms. Zimmer, you had a suggestion. You wanted to do something?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend the capital improvement plan to pause both Freedom Elementary and Sykesville Middle School projects and reprioritize them for fiscal year 2028.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second for the amended pause for Freedom and Sykesville Middle. Comments or questions? All right, so I call for the vote on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? All right, so that was five and oh. Okay. And then I will call for the, were there any other suggestions or anything regarding any other? I mean, I don't, I'm not going to put a motion on the floor or anything, but I do want us to take a look at Liberty High School. Kind of sooner than later.
I'm in agreement with sooner than later for Liberty.
So the CIP before you, as constructed, would ask for funding for the feasibility study to determine what can happen with Liberty in terms of a modernization. So if you vote for that as was, we would begin to unpack that.
Yep. So we're just hopeful, we'll wait and see how that comes about. Perfect. All right, so then with the added amendment that we already voted on, then we'll vote on the rest of this, the capital budget. Do I have call for the vote on that? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, it passes unanimously. Okay, we're all good there. Next, we have the approval of Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. Do I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Malvo. Second by Dr. Dorsey. Dr. McCabe.
State regulation requires that each local board complete an annual comprehensive maintenance plan. We bring that for board approval each October. The CMP details our efforts to maintain our schools and how we align our operational budget to resources to maintain our schools. Mr. O'Neil and Mr. Prokop are available for any discussion or questions.
Ms. Zimmer.
I have a couple of questions, and this almost feels like a nod to Ms. Sevigny because I have a handful of questions. Mr. Prokop, did I read the document correctly that you're putting a strong focus on preventative maintenance to, in an effort to reduce reactive or more costly emergency maintenance? And if so, could you just talk to us a little bit more about that approach?
Sure, and that's accurate. We've, that's been an effort for, for a number of years now, I suppose, and also a state initiative to prioritize preventive maintenance over reactive. It's certainly much better, it's much more cost-effective to address things before they break, before there's a scramble, and you have to deal with, you know, folks that might be impacted negatively from those emergencies. We also, you know, we more fully have integrated our CMMS program, which is our automated work order management program that allows us to, you know, populate that database with all of the things that need to be done and then get it to the people that need to do it in a very orderly and regulated manner. So the more we, the more we do that, the more we should be able to catch things before they become an emergency.
I felt like you outlined that really well in this document and the added areas where you're adding, constantly adding preventative maintenance, so I appreciate that. And we always want to go with the more cost-effective way, always. My next questions all have to do with the chart at the bottom of page 19, which has to do with custodial staffing. I found this chart a little bit concerning. According to the American Physical Plant Association, so you had this all listed in the document, that according to this, the APPA, we should have about 259 custodians for our 4.2 million square foot of facilities. And according to this chart, we currently have 255 positions, which is 34 fewer than the standard. Can you talk to me a little bit about that?
Well, unfortunately, like every other department in this organization, the cuts have occurred due to fiscal constraints, and they started back in 2012 and have resulted in what you, what you see here, which is we're above that threshold that's been established. There's a lot of, what I would call out for my, for the folks out in the schools is that this is, you know, this is kind of a broad stroke that you see here. The real impact is also associated with the fact that the custodial staff handles use of facilities, for instance. So that overtime goes to them, that, that extra workload goes, goes to them. And they also have to cover when we have either a medical issue, a staff member may have a medical issue, and you have, and folks have to cover that. And we also struggle with, with filling some of these positions. And so there's an awful lot of work that goes, that isn't reflected even in this, the fact that we're over that threshold. So, so, yeah, we, your concern is our concern, and we've had this, you know, it's been a concern since we've cut, you know, since we've had to cut staff.
And I'll just add to that, that in the decade that we cut over $40 million, we often spend our time talking about the over 300 instructional positions that we had to cut during those years. But what we don't often talk about is all of the other things we had to cut as well, just to stay open. And one of those cuts that we had to make was to custodial, maintenance and custodial staff. And as Mr. Prokop said, that means that more work gets put on the shoulders of fewer people.
Yeah, so to add to the unhappy history, we cut 10 FTE, full-time custodian positions, in 12, I believe, and then another 20 and a half and fiscal 14. The numbers Dr. McCabe refers to, if you were to revisit that information, was 45-plus FTE, but some of that was associated with the school closures, so we, we also gave up the square footage when we closed the schools, so that doesn't impact that ratio in the chart. It would have been, it would have been nice to have kept some of those FTE to balance out the work in other schools, but we weren't able to do that. So from the time I've worked here, fiscal 11 to now, we essentially have said to our custodial workforce as it, as it shrunk during the reductions, you know, originally, I think they were sort of, it's, it's an average, but, you know, formula average. It was sort of like one custodian is responsible for 16,000 square feet, and now it's more like one custodian is responsible for over 19,000 square feet, if you kind of average it out. The other thing we did, which our custodians and the union who represents them would be, would be happy for me to share, is as we made the reductions in square footage, building by buildings not uniform, to, you know, to try to find that balance, we split FTEs, which we had never done before. So we got into a situation where I'm, I'm a custodian, but I work at these two schools, not just one. And that's not a happy thing for the custodian, it's not a happy thing for the, for the principal, and it's not something ideally we love either because then those two schools have to figure out, well, how does that sharing work? Is it, is it part of each day? Is it certain days you're at my school, and certain days you're at the other school? So, so all of those things have happened to lead to that, but, you know, to your, probably to your original point, Board Member Zimmer, you know, except for that history, we would be pretty close to that, to that suggested ratio.
Can you explain to the people who are watching what it means, the use of facilities, and that our custodians are not just cleaning and taking care of the facilities that our students are using, but can you explain the use of facilities?
Sure, we have, our use of facilities, all of our buildings are used quite extensively in the evenings, usually until 10, 11 o'clock at night sometimes. The high schools especially, but nevertheless, all, any place, any place we have a gym is utilized. And so all of that, all of that use is covered. We, the coverage, the personnel, the school system personnel that are, that are required to be there are the custodial staff. And any sort of cleanup that has to occur afterward, any sort of setup that has to occur before, and, and breaking down of chairs, tables, all sorts of things depending on the situation. And then the securing of the building before they leave. So there's, there's quite a bit that goes, that goes into that. And unfortunately, in our, in our elementary schools especially, there's only two custodial staff and a building supervisor. There's, and some of our elementaries are used quite a bit. Some of them have, at least one has shared space, for instance, which ratchets up that use. It's quite a workload to deal with.
Yeah, I just want to take it back to my first point, that the amount of work and with our system running at a 34-person delta. As we continue adding pre-K wings to most of our elementary schools, adding thousands of additional square feet, are we planning to hire additional custodians to maintain them? Or is the plan for the current custodians to absorb that additional workload?
Yeah, we have to, as, as we go into that this next year, where we look to open the kindergarten additions, pre-K additions, the first ones will begin to open in the next budget cycle, we'll begin to look at that square footage, compare what the staff is currently has individually, each individual school. So we'll break this down, and we'll begin to analyze that, that very question in this, in the upcoming budget cycle.
Okay, it's something I definitely want to keep an eye on. And then just to wrap up, just not a question, but a statement that I appreciate, that Carroll County Public Schools has a history of maximizing outcomes with very limited resources. And while I admire our system's ability to do this, I am concerned about our employees and their capability, their capacity to sustain personnel shortages, shortages long-term. With staffing remaining below standards, the community may need to consider adjusting our expectations. Our staff works incredibly hard, and I want the community to understand that they're doing so with below-standard resources because we run such a lean organization. Thank you.
And I would just, one, one comment is I think our buildings are maintained, you know, at a very high level. You know, and I've seen, I've, nothing against any of our pure counties, but, you know, I would hold our system against any of them.
I absolutely agree with that, 110%.
But I agree with you that the workload, at a certain point, you know, those expectations might be impacted.
Thank you.
Dr. Dorsey.
Thanks very much for the information, and again, I just think our custodial staff, maintenance crew, the whole department, maintenance and operation, I think you guys are really doing a wonderful job. I am looking at this information on page 23 about the maintenance employee to handle the, the preventative, preventive, I'm sorry, maintenance tasks. How we have that person at the high school levels. And the statement here is that, again, our building supervisors at the elementary and middle schools currently have that task. And it looks like the plan is to, at the elementary and middle schools, have a person centrally who can do the preventive maintenance, maintenance work as well.
Yes, so the, the idea is to, is to sort of focus more, more, you know, target some of the training and some, some personnel to, to affect what the, what that maintenance person at the high schools does, to gain that same advantage, but not having a full-time person at any one school.
Okay, so that person would sort of float, or those persons would float?
Right, and they'd work directly with the schools to make, you know, to focus on the things. Each individual school, you have schools of different vintages, different, different needs, and those are the sorts of, you know, efforts that would, will pay off in the long run.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, if you all look at page 43 on the plan here, the building supervisor's preventive maintenance schedule is extremely impressive in terms of its thoroughness. What the supervisor must do daily, monthly, quarterly, we have a nice, large list here. Is this list expanded or increased because of our lack of numbers of maintenance, or is this pretty much the standard?
I think it's more of a, more of a standard, because it applies to a building, it's regardless of the, the number of custodial staff. These are the things that have to be done, you know, so it, it has to be done. There's, there's no way around it for, we're not going to start to cut that or, you know, for, for lack of staffing. Those things, these things have to be done.
Yeah, it's a very extensive list. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
I do, Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Prokop, you know, in our earlier discussion about the $800,000 plus for the lights, again, on page 31, you were talking about, you know, things that may have to slide because of the movement of that $800,000. Is, are the items on 31 something you were talking about? And then again, we have all these appendices. I imagine it may not be from one bucket, but from, maybe from a myriad of, projects that you have going on, but are these the kinds of things that will be impacted by the movement of that $800,000 for the lights?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to amend this? Because again, we're taking a vote on these items.
We have.
Obviously, you won't vote on the budget, but do we need to amend any of these because of that $800,000?
The plan, the plan always includes items that we just don't get to for numerous reasons, most of them fiscal. But this is what we intend to do, but then we have to adjust as we go along, reprioritize if we have to. So, yeah, we wouldn't, we'd, we'd want it approved as, as is. We wouldn't want to try to amend it.
Any other comments or questions? All right, a call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any ayes? Passes unanimously. All right, next we are moving on to 6G Approval of Personnel Action Items. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey. Second by Ms. Zimmer. Dr. McCabe.
For tonight's personnel action items, there are two new hires, one retiree rehired, and three broken contracts.
Comments or questions? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is 6H Approval of the Construction Documents for William Winchester Elementary Pre-K Addition. Do I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Malvo. Second by Dr. Dorsey. Dr. McCabe.
The next six items are related to projects in the CIP that have been under design. Items 6H through 6M are the approvals of the construction documents for the first six pre-K additions at six of our elementary schools. William Winchester, Elmer Wolf, Runnymede, Robert Moton, Westminster, and Spring Garden. This is the first phase in our plan to establish space to meet the blueprint requirements for the public school system portion of full-day pre-K expansion. The approval of construction The approval of construction documents is the final formal step in the design process. Once approved, the construction documents are used to create the project's scope and details for bids for construction of the projects. The bid awards would return to the board for future approval at a future date. I will need the board to act on each individual project, one at a time. Mr. Prokop is available for any questions or discussion as we go.
All right. In board numbers, I'll just go through each one with a motion, and then we'll vote one. All right, so the first one is, any questions or comments regarding William Winchester? All right, a call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is 6I, do I have a motion for the Elmer Wolf Elementary Pre-K Edition Project?
Zimmer.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Zimmer. Any comments or questions regarding the pre-K addition project for Elmer Wolf? A call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Do I have a motion for 6J approval of the construction documents for Runnymede Elementary Pre-K Edition Project?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Malvo.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Zimmer. Any comments or questions? A call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is 6K approval of the construction documents for the Robert Moten Elementary Pre-K Edition. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
So moved.
Seconded by Dr. Malvo. Any comments or questions? A call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is the approval of construction documents for the Westminster Elementary Pre-K Edition Project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey. Seconded by Dr. Malvo. Any comments or questions? A call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, I have the 6M approval of the construction documents for the Spring Garden Elementary Pre-K Edition. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Malvo.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Zimmer. Any comments or questions? A call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, next we have 6N approval of appointments. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Zimmer.
Second.
And seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Dr. McCabe?
I have one appointment for your approval this evening, and that is Ms. Shelley Brazicki from Career Connections Coordinator at Manchester Valley High School to Acting Assistant Principal at Manchester Valley High School.
Any comments or questions? A call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, next we have on the agenda, number seven, discussion. We're going to be having a discussion on 7A, the physical year 27 budget. Dr. McCabe?
It's hard to believe, but we are on the cusp of the time of year once again, where we begin to prepare an operating budget for you to consider for the next fiscal year. We are planning budget work sessions for you for November and December, where we can delve deeper into background information and operating budget details. So we are looking forward to those discussions with you. For tonight, we did want to bring a discussion item on the FY '27 operating budget to highlight a few items of interest that we are focused on as we work to develop the FY '27 budget. There are three major items we would like to share this evening, as they are somewhat unique items, that will be part of this year's overall budget process. Specifically, we want to address what we are seeing with our overall enrollment, the concept of funding the initial year of the charter school, and the status of unassigned fund balance based on the independent audit report you accepted earlier this evening. Mr. O'Neill and Mr. Burke are here to provide a brief presentation, and we will engage you in questions and discussion.
Thank you, Dr. McCabe. I think Dr. McCabe framed that nicely. Mr. Burke and I are going to work on this together in a beautifully choreographed manner. He is going to present the nuts and bolts and the mechanical parts, and I might chime in with some overarching thoughts as we go.
Okay, good evening. As we kick off our fiscal year '27 operating budget cycle, as we said, a few items we want to highlight, where am I pointing? There we go. So, want to talk a bit about the impact that enrollment will have on our upcoming budget. Enrollments, as you know, are taken as of September 30th, so just recently, past that date that'll capture, those won't be certified until later in the calendar year, when they're finalized, submitted to the state, and certified. So we don't have real hard numbers, but we're beginning to get a sense of where we stand. And then, other student populations, some specifics that tie into some of the blueprint programs will be captured at the end of this month. So, more data to come, but just want to begin to point out how enrollment impacts state funding, and of course, the blueprint programs. Important to note, as we begin to look at where we're heading with enrollment, that the state funding formulas use the higher figure of either that current year's enrollment, so the count we just had, or if it's higher, an average of the last three years. And so, as we begin to look at our enrollment count, again, our sort of early unofficial look is that our enrollment is declining, some of the discussion that you had earlier. Looking, you know, it'll be, it'll be calculated and certified later in the year, but an estimate that we're using is about 350 students across the system. So again, that would be a fairly significant hit in one year to take. So the formula is that it would average the prior three years, and when we do that, that three-year average is a loss in student count of about 122. So it smoothes out and mitigates the impact that we're seeing in one year. Again, we'll know more after our October 31st count, and as we get later in the year, we'll have a better understanding of some of the blueprint programs and how those are impacted. The other factor that goes into our state funding in particular is legislated in the blueprint law, and that's the per pupil funding that we receive, specifically, foundation funding is scheduled in fiscal year '27 to increase by about $335 per pupil. So we'll see an increase in per pupil funding, a slight decrease in actual enrollment that'll, that'll help mitigate, you know, the increase in, and the per pupil should mitigate a bit. But, yeah, so, so a couple of moving parts there that Mr. O'Neill will address.
So you recall the joint meeting with the commissioners? We talked a little bit about what we were seeing with enrollment, specifically to the southeast region of the county. This is sort of the full picture. So pending certification from the state, it looks like we're going to be down 350 kids. So this isn't down from a projected increase by 350, this is 350 students less this September 30 than the prior September 30. And so, you know, that's, that's not a good thing. A couple of things that help is the three-year average that the blueprint contains, and the fact that the targeted per pupil goes up. But another theme that I feel like is starting to follow my career is, we can never seem to catch all of the correct circumstances at the right time. And if you think back to last year, and Mr. Kane might shout out the correct number to me, but I believe we were projecting to be up by over 200 students, and we ended up not meeting that projection. Last year, we came in at, I think, plus 20 students, whereas we were projecting a lot. And that was a troubling year, because the annual increase on the foundation per pupil was very small that year, for some reason, programmed into the blueprint. We finally get to the year where it's a much nicer targeted growth in the foundation, and our enrollment actually goes down. And so this is, you know, this is going to put pressure on what we could do with costs and priorities, conversations with the, with the folks across the street at the county as well. And then, to the point about the special populations, when Rob mentioned total enrollment certified based on September 30, the other population is October 31st. So that would include student, students who are identified as special needs students, multilingual learner students, and compensatory ed students. What we learned last year, when our enrollment was essentially flat, or only plus 20-ish, is that even though that was the case, our special populations in some cases went way up. So basically, a flat enrollment last September, but plus 264 students in compensatory ed, and I think plus 70, 71 or 72 ML learners. So that matters too, because that, those funds, if you recall, the discussions on blueprint are sort of restricted or confined to what we can do with those programs. But they also come with an increased local share. So when the compensatory ed enrollment goes up, and state funding requirements go up for compensatory ed students, we have to spend it in certain ways, but it also increases the local government's share, the local share of those programs as well. So there's, there's some things to monitor here, and I know at some point, we'll put Mr. Kane on the spot in public, I think it's a little premature, because we're still doing a lot of studying. But this is a concern that we're looking at, not just for fiscal '27's budget preparation, but I think possibly for the longer term. So last year was the beginning of something, this is year two. I don't know if statistically that can be called a trend, but it's a pattern, and it's a troubling pattern, and, and you know, none of us on staff, not even Mr. Kane, as talented as he is, are professionally trained demographers. But it, you know, it looks like if you want to start to speculate about a couple of things, we're not seeing the net, positive net migration into the county that we had been seeing in the few years before these last two years, meaning whether it was new housing or housing inventory turning over. Folks maybe who had raised their kids here downsizing to something else, and a new family with kids moving in, we were seeing that, and now we're not seeing that at all. And also, some initial, some initial glances which need to be further explored. It seems like, based on some of our birth rates, which we know, we're not necessarily seeing all of those students who should be showing up in kindergarten now showing up in kindergarten. So, you know, some of that we may never be able to fully tease out. Are they still here but pursuing some other option for education, or did they move out of Carroll County between the time of the birth of the child and when they would be entering kindergarten? But this is a, you know, this will have some impact for this year certainly, but it's also sort of a watch for the future, because 350 students down is, is a number that would be consistent with that decade that Dr. McCabe has referred to of sort of the really, really, really tough budget years. Now I'll let Mr. Burke move to the next.
Can I just ask one question? It's concerning the special population. I'm just wondering, do we account for students who might be in the pipeline for being identified as special ed, or is it the ones who currently are identified as of that October?
Yeah, it's as of that date, it's the hard and fast date, and it's that way with all the populations. If a student shows up on October 1st, but they weren't here on September 30, they're not in our count overall. If they're, if they're not with an approved IEP on file on October 31st, then they're not, they're not there, and the state's very sticky about that. Even down to the $1,000, they reimburse us for special needs transportation. If the IEP doesn't say on October 31st that the student should get transportation, we do not get the $1,000 for the student. So it's kind of a hard and fast rule on that, on those dates.
Okay, as we mentioned, a few of the other impacts that we're going to be looking at, the charter school, that the board approved the application two months ago or so, that will be looking to open in school year 2026, '27. So if the charter's completed and things move forward as anticipated, that school would be opening next fall. It would be opening, the proposal is for kindergarten through six, so a 280 enrollment, and depending on how all those processes work out, you know, we'll understand more later. But at a 280 enrollment, we begin to look at how we would fund that school. The state has requirements of how the school system will fund charter schools, and there is some uncertainty and some, some change happening in guidance, so we're not fully locked in on how it all works. But our estimate for now, at that opening year, would be in the range of three and a half to four million. And then it is the schools, in their application, they, they rolled out the idea that over the following two school years, to increase a grade each, each year, so seventh and eighth grade over years two and three, would bring it up to a 360 enrollment. And a loose projection for us then, as we project out a couple more years into about fiscal year '29, you know, we'd be heading up toward five million, you know, potentially, as we understand more about the per pupil allocation. So a significant, you know, new piece to the budget there that we'll, we'll need to absorb.
I have a quick question. So you said about the five million, is that five million in additional ongoing cost that the school system would have to put in place every year? Like, so basically, what, what would it be a year additionally that the school system would have to have a placeholder for, for that school?
Right. So our fiscal year '27 estimate is in that three and a half to four million range?
Okay.
And then ramping up over the next two years to something in the $5 million range annually?
Five million additionally annually?
Not additionally. So our '27 impact would be three and a half to four million, our '28 might be in the four and a half million range, and by '29, we're looking at something around $5 million per year in cost for the charter.
Okay, so for like, for us, so like, whatever we have now, ongoing, it's going to be five million a year, we need to make sure it's like blocked for the charter specifically?
Right, we're absorbing the cost of a new operating school, moving forward.
Okay, so it is costing the school system five million a year?
I think Mr. O'Neill has a few costs.
I want to make sure.
I want to start, at least the opening, the bottom point there, that, that the enrollment count won't be known or counted into our full enrollment until fiscal year '28. So there's that year lag that we're talking about for enrollment. So we'll know more after about a year of operating, what enrollment is in that school, what enrollment it may bring into the school system. So I think, I think we'll expand on that.
I definitely want to make sure the public understands this, because there has been a lot of things on social media, like, oh, it's not going to cost additionally for the school system, they're just moving money. No, I want people to understand, like, this is what it's going to cost the school system, and us as a school system might have to make some hard choices, because by law, we have to fund that school.
Yeah, a couple, couple of things. President Pataglia, overall, it's more nuanced than that, and I'll try to, I'll try to talk about that in a second. Just a couple of overarching thoughts. Mr. O'Malley would normally point this out. The State Board has had something like 20-some years to clearly define the per pupil allocation, funding of charter schools, and is now getting around to it. And so, you know, ultimately, that'll be a positive thing. There's been some controversy and litigation in other counties with charter schools, and weirdly enough, we will likely benefit from that, because the State Board is now moving in a direction where they're clarifying sort of at a, at a state policy guidance level, what, how the PPA, the per pupil allocation to fund charter schools would work. We believe that we have been, and I, and I think all of the evidence suggests this, we've been trying to monitor those cases and monitor State Board guidance coming out subsequent to those cases, and we feel like we're in line with it. And I do not feel like we will find ourselves in such a controversy here in Carroll County with, with our presumptive charter school. And, and that's why we give you a range here, because we're gonna, you know, we're gonna refine that per pupil allocation down, down to the time when, when they're looking at actual enrollments, but I think three and a half to four falls, falls safely within that range. Now, you know, philosophical debates over charter schools, or this charter school, that's not where I'm trying to go, you could make a case of different things. You could make a case that if this charter school opens, and it brings in most of its population, or 100% of its student population, from students who are not presently enrolled in our schools, homeschooled kids, kids in private schools or parochial schools, then eventually, you would say that they will fall into our September 30 and October 30 eventually you, you would say that they will fall into our September 30 and October 31st accounts. And, and in essence, we would begin to receive at least state aid, state funding to pay for the operation of the charter school. My guess is it would be 100% proposition and that some students might come from those sources and some kids might be in our, in our other schools already. And so that, you know, that's kind of a different way of looking at it. All we're trying to get at with this presentation is in that first year, those students aren't anywhere in our head count relative to this charter school. And so for that initial year of startup, and even at a much smaller scale for those years of added growth, you know, those are costs that we have to plan for as part of the FY '27 budget development. And so that's why we're bringing this up now. That's a unique thing for '27 that we haven't had to address before.
I think it's, it's important to make sure that the public understands because there has been this, this little bit of this rhetoric that, oh, it's not going to cost the school system anything, it's not anything additional, when in essence it is. Yes, those people, those children might end up being part of our count, and the staff is our responsibility to make sure they are taken care of and paid for. So it's like, I want people to understand, so, and this is just an example, if we go to the county commissioners and say, okay, we're requesting 20 million more than this year, but also that, I'm going to need this five over here in this corner, don't count it in that 20 million, but we're going to need that five for the charter. So if people start hearing like, the school system is asking for a such and such dollar amount plus an additional for the charter, like, I want people to understand that this is something, A, we have to do. It, it's not like an option, like, oh, we just decide we want to open another school. B, that, yeah, it is, it is going to cost the school system initially and ongoing, but, you know, we're going to have to ask for funding for this stuff.
It's, and that's why we're bringing it up in that sense. We, we know that we're going to have increases in utilities, and we're going to have increases in healthcare, and we're going to have increases in other ways, insurances. We know that we're going to have in '27 this increase to address. I'm choosing to believe that that's why Ted Zaleski is here tonight, but.
Hi.
But the truth is, no one alive knows what the population of that school would, where those students are all going to come from.
Right.
So we, we don't know how many of them might not be in our count already, and how many of them would be new to our count until we get up and running. It doesn't change the fact that we have to be able to fund the opening of the school next year.
And I just want to reiterate, it was just an example. 20 million was just an example? That's not what I'm going to go straight to asking for. Okay, go. Thanks.
Mr. Whistler has his.
Mr. Whistler?
Yeah, again, I, I appreciate your comments, President Pataglia. Again, I, I'm not sure if the public needs to be worried to the extent I think you're trying to caution them to be. A lot of the startup costs associated with the charter school, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Burke or Mr. O'Neil, a lot of it's going to be spreading out what we already have in other schools to fund that. Because again, we may see kids transfer from existing schools to that school. And then again, we may see other kids, as you mentioned, Mr. O'Neil, not in our system, coming into our system. So, so that may be a source of revenue. I think the bone of contention is the startup costs. Because again, these kids will not be on our records, and we won't get initial state funding. But, but, but the subsequent follow-on years, we will get dollars from the state as appropriate. And again, it's more of a spreading out and, and, and the additional monies that might come from the state in future years. But it's not, as I think my colleague was suggesting, we need to park three and a half, four million dollars to do it. I mean, I think that needs to be done the first year, but we may not see that huge outlay of costs in follow-on years. Am I correct in that assessment, Mr. O'Neil?
Mr. Whistler, I would say it comes down to the, what the enrollment ultimately is. And I, I guess, and maybe I'm trying to sidestep a bigger thought on this. Like, for me, in my, in my professional role, it's, I'm, I'm grasping for better words, that's immaterial to me. It's a law, and they're following the law, and you've been following the law. So if the school opens, it shall open under Maryland law. But to your, one of your points, the, you know, the, the relevant item for us is that the startup year needs to be money that we identify for the startup year. I can't speculate where their enrollment will come from when, when they open. They, they could have 100% of kids who are presently homeschooled or parochially schooled or private schooled. And if that were the case, then essentially the money that would follow from the state after that would be sort of to pay for that ongoing operation. And you could have a, you know, each person could have a very different philosoph, philosophical feeling about a student who's already enrolled, how much money should or would have been spent on that student. I, I don't know how to address that other than to say, you know, we're following the law, they're following the law, and the big, the big lift is the opening of the school in its first year from a fiscal standpoint.
Right. Yeah, I, I think it might be somewhere in the middle of what my colleague and I are talking about. But again, the initial outlay is definitely something that we need to plan for. Getting back to your point earlier about the enrollment, I think we're going to continue to see declining enrollment as long as we see high interest rates. We're not seeing a lot of people sell homes, so, so you're not seeing that, that, that churn of homes and new families moving in. So this is something that we may need to prepare to, to, you know, to just withstand and prepare for. You know, if interest rates don't come down and people don't refinance or buy or move, that's, that's a byproduct. Moreover, with the inflationary issues, it's more expensive for young folks to buy family, families can't buy the homes today. So, you know, this, this declining enrollment may be something we see because of the high interest rate environment and, and the inflationary costs that prevent young families from buying expensive homes here in our county.
It, it could be all of those things, and I think some of those things were, were brought up at the joint meeting. I don't know that we'll ever fully know, but we need to watch this, not just this year, but very carefully. And, and maybe for some of us who've been here a long time, through a lot of years, I'm gun shy. But if this becomes the trend, it's, those are rugged years, and it's hard to sustain. So we have to hope that that's not the case. We eventually, I guess we didn't plateau, we eventually what, valued? And I was even willing to live with that. And then it was especially nice when we were ticking up a bit and, and actually fairly consistently. But these last two years represent a pretty sharp turnaround.
Yeah, and this is even more the reason why we need to continue our full court press in Annapolis and lobby our legislators for relief on these blueprint mandates. And, and in particular, the funding model. We need more flexibility with, with more money and foundation. Again, I, people know that I've been a big proponent of trying to decrease our reliance on single-use, single-issue laptops for our kindergarten and, I mean, our, our, our primary and middle school grades. I mean, we, again, I, if we need to, we need to make a decision and determine whether or not we should withdraw from this single laptop issue for middle school and our third, fourth, and fifth graders. I mean, that would save us $2 million a year right there. And I'm not saying take away laptops, but I'm saying, look at how we use our technology. I, I'd rather see more reading and writing myself. But, but again, we may be in a position where we're forced to withdraw from our single-use laptop policy for our middle and primary grades. And again, that's, 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 that's $2 million. That's, that's real money. But again, I appreciate the discussion and the, and the thoughts by you and your, and your colleagues on this.
Dr. Malvo?
Said one question thought. We've brought up enrollment a number of times in terms of budget, and I'm just trying to consider what budget surplus this school might bring so that it's not a $3.5 million cost. I know, for example, they had a large grant that came with the school that they earned. Can any of that money from the grant, or is there any other thing we're, we're not thinking about that might bring surplus?
All right, so the, the makeup of the charter school is that there is a, an operating foundation, and then the charter school operation itself. So there's sort of a, almost like a, a parent organization to the charter school. That, that was the recipient of the grant. And I, and my understanding is primarily they'll use that and their ramp up and startup that'll begin prior to, to even our July 1 and, and our fall openings. So they'll, they'll need to begin to operate, you know, ramp up some months as they're coming in that, that will not fall to us.
It, it'll go to, and I don't, these are just general things. I don't know what they'll actually use it for, that they'll use it as they're approved in their grant. But typically, that might go to things like securing the facility or financing the facility, those kinds of operational things that the, that the operator, in our case, the Carroll Learning Alliance would have to, have to do to become operational, not, that money won't come to the Board of Ed or to the school system. Same thing with their fundraising efforts eventually. That'll, that'll be for the school level.
Okay. Thank you.
The last piece that we wanted to touch on, as we've wrapped up our fiscal year '25 audit and financial statements tonight, we now have a handle on fund balance at year end of about 7.2 million. So that's about 1.7% or so of our, of our total budget. As you know, the board has a policy of maintaining unassigned fund balance between 1 and 5%. The superintendent referenced, you know, in that two and a half, 3% is a, is a sweet spot that for some years we were maintaining and, you know, would be ideal. We've dipped under 2% here. So, you know, as with any one-time money, you've, you know, once, once we use it, it's, you know, it comes out of the balance. And the leaner, but the leaner the budget years we, we have, the, you know, the less surplus we have to, to replenish it, as this, as this year demonstrated. So as you know, we've assigned fund balance. We talked about some of the maintenance type uses we've done in the past over, over different years. So I think the, the point is, as we move into this budget process, we'll have to be a little more conservative, a little more selective about what uses we want to see for that fund balance and how much, you know, sort of how, how thin we can stretch, stretch there and, and still be in good shape. So if you want to touch on the maintenance?
I, I do. We, you, you sort of teased it out earlier, and I don't want to rehash everything, but I, I would say, and there are others, Gary Davis has got to be sitting back there saying, what about my bullet point? And that would be fair as well. There are certain ways in which we have, I would say supplemented the operations of our school system by, by the use of either fund balance, which is the certif, or the audited amount, once you close out a fiscal year, and that year's annual surplus from that fiscal year moves to the, to the greater fund balance. Or sometimes just with year-end surplus through major categorical transfers at the end of the year. And there's, there's several. Security is another one. We've bought textbooks and materials before to, you know, get ahead of or finalize phases and changes in curriculum. We've done all of those things which are appro, which are appropriate uses one time. Historically, you know, I think Mr. Davis's shop or budget runs maybe what, $2 million, Gary, short of what we would actually need to refresh on cycle all of our devices. And we've tried to be creative and find ways to, either with surplus before it becomes fund balance or fund balance to, to try to support that. But since fiscal '18, we have basically run Ray's general maintenance of schools through a local CIP project account, which is funded by your fund balance, by, by budget actions you take periodically to move money to fund balance. And, and every year at some point now, or, or in the fall, there's a slide, and I say something like, we can't do this forever. We got to be careful about this. This was not meant to be our forever mode of operation. I think last fall, what I said was, I guess I was sort of giving up and saying something along the lines of, if this is going to be our forever, because it's been about a decade now since fiscal '18, then maybe we need to be much more intentional about how much we move and when. Meaning, instead of whenever we can, maybe every year we need to put a, a million dollars into Ray's CIP project account so he can do those kinds of things. Now we're confronted with a scenario where in good conscience, we would not recommend to you to transfer any more fund balance into that CIP project account. And that creates a, a bit of a dilemma. And Ray has always operated with a bit of dilemma since fiscal '18. He has X amount of dollars, he doesn't know what might be on his horizon. Today it's light poles, it has been the brick facade at Westminster High School. It's been different things. And so Ray has to strike a balance and, and run ideas off of me and, and Dr. McCabe periodically of, okay, how much of this can I plan out on known projects and do comfortably, knowing that I don't know what that one thing is that could be on the horizon and how much it costs? So we've always tried to manage that and balance that, and then at the right time through budget actions, come back to you and say, let's move some money again from fund balance into that project. We were poised to do that now, and now we find ourselves at a place where we can't do that. So, and I'm, I, I don't mean to be dismissive of any of the board's comments at all, and we'll, we'll take this to heart and, and sort of think about it in a different way. But headed into tonight, for me, it wasn't, what do we do or what do we not do because we spent this $800,000 on, on these stadia lights? It was the bigger picture of, okay, that's going to take that account down and fund balance at the moment. Now, it'll accrue again over time, but fund balance at the moment is not a place to go to repopulate that. So that, I can't come up with a better analogy. That bill, the bill for that decision made in fiscal '18 has sort of now come due, and we're going to have to figure out how we're going to run the maintenance of our schools, at least for the year coming.
Thank you, sorry. Just a comment about the entire presentation and to state the obvious, I'm concerned. To Mr. Whistler's point earlier, I agree that I think that the high interest rates have a big part to do with this, and families, young families are finding them, finding it much more difficult to be able to move into Carroll County. We have some beautiful building happening over in the southern part of the county. Unfortunately, it's all 55 and older, and I don't think we're going to find any students there. So the declining enrollment is obviously very worrisome. And just about the system as a whole, running this lean, bringing it back to my point earlier when I was speaking about the custodians, when we're running this, stressing the system, running this lean long-term, I, I feel a lot of concern about that. And that also includes a concern for our ability to give our employees any kind of increases this year, along with a plethora of other issues we're going to be facing with such tight constraints heading into this budget season. So it's not a question, just a statement. I'm sure everyone up here can agree, it's concerning.
Wait, there's this guy sitting right here in this front row. Like, we gave him a really hard time last year. Hi, how are you? You might see us again this year, just saying.
And to, to that big, bigger point, Ms. Zimmer, this was just meant to be three things tonight, but the November and December work sessions, we'll start to put the whole, the whole picture together and talk through the, all of those aspects.
Yeah, these are just my preliminary worries.
Well, yeah, or wow, these are three big things that, you know, we wouldn't have been anticipating a year or two ago that are on our horizon for this particular budget year.
I'm sorry, one last point. I saw in one of the documents, and forgive me, I don't have my notes in front of me, that we have projected to be looking at about a 13% increase in enrollment by '32. I'm, I'm assuming that is no longer the case. And I don't need an exact number, I'm just, is that, is it fair that we need to really relook at those long-term numbers?
Yes, and it will be automatically. So you're probably referring to some reference in Bill's enrollment projections, which are part of the facilities master plan. Those, those would have, the most recent official version would have been from the past May-June when you last adopted the master plan. Mr. Kane will update those projections again for this master plan in May-June, and this year's known enrollments will become a factor in that. And so that, he, what does he call it? The cohort survival method? With each successive year of knowns, it, it informs, it changes that projection out for five or 10 years. So yes, it will go down.
Keeping you on your toes, waited till we left the room to ask.
I noticed. Turned around and Bill was gone.
Mr. Whistler?
Yeah, again, I, John, I appreciate your comments. And look, there's nobody more than me that hates using operational money for what I think we should be using capital money for. I'm, I'm wondering, you know, with the comptroller's latest report, what, about three weeks ago, saying that so many of our schools are, you know, deteriorating? I, I'm sure you and I on the May legislative committee will be looking out for any kind of word on whether we see legislative action to pour more capital funds into schools around the state. You know, with us losing our AAA bond rating last year, I, I'm not sure how much we'll see. But what worries me, and I see Ted Zaleski- But what worries me, and I see Ted Zalinski sitting over there in the corner next to you, I'm not expecting the state to ride on a terrific white stallion and say, hey, here's, here's, here's all this capital money, because I'm really worried about the state passing laws that will say, here, here's capital money, but we're gonna, we're gonna really stick it to our local governments as well, and they have to kick in huge, huge shares as well. So, but, you know, maybe we'll get some relief from the state with this Comptroller's report, but I'm not holding my breath. But like you said, I would love to see us transition ultimately away from using our operational funds for these maintenance issues that we should be using capital money for.
All right, thank you. Next is 7B, the board policy DJE bidding limits. Dr. McCabe.
You may recall that a few months ago, Mr. Mike Myers, our supervisor of purchasing, presented an overview to the board of our procurement procedures and practices. During the discussion, the board inquired if we believed there were any updates to make to our policies. That conversation led to these two suggested policy revisions being brought for discussion this evening. The proposed revisions are for your discussion this evening and then would be submitted for a month of public comment before returning for action next month. Mr. Burke is here to provide the highlight of the proposed revisions and to answer any questions, and then he can address policy DJE and then move to DJA. Mr. Burke?
Thank you. As mentioned, DJE and DJA, two board policies that basically define the formal bid limits for Carroll County Public Schools. Some discussion was had, and the proposal from our supervisor purchasing is to raise the formal bid limit for Carroll County Public Schools from $25,000 to $50,000. State of Maryland dictates local government procurement limits, they've moved that to $100,000 at the state, but many local jurisdictions are increasing around $50,000. Carroll County Government recently set theirs at $50,000, as well as quite a number of jurisdictions surrounding us. So this policy hadn't been updated since at least 2009, and I don't think the bid limit had probably been touched in longer than that, so certainly more than 25 years, I would think. That $25,000 lasted for a long time at a lot of jurisdictions, but really have seen that sort of best practice raised. So basically what that means is the superintendent and staff would have authority to work on contracts under $50,000, and just as we bring you the award of bids with that bid limit of $25,000, now every month, we would continue to do that at a new bid limit of $50,000. You know, formal bidding takes a significant amount of staff resource, time, energy, to go out to bid and so forth, so we're always looking for that balance between, you know, value to be had against the, the work and effort to, to go out for that process. So the DJE, the only change, I believe, as we look at the policy itself, is to, again, change the $25,000 to 50, and then the policy also dictates a competitive quote process. So currently, $7,500 to $25,000 is required to get, generally at least get informal quotes. The recommendation is to change that accordingly to between $15,000 to $50,000 to be able to get informal quotes. So we're still seeking competition. We require that we document several quotes before we would, would enter into a purchase for under that $50,000 range. So if there's any questions, be glad to answer them.
Mr. Whistler.
Now, Rob, again, I really appreciate this. You, Mike, and Gary, you know, that, that state-level increase, that was actually one of our very own delegate Tomlinson's first bills that he got passed when he went to Annapolis. And so it just makes sense that we raise these limits because it's just, again, for so long, it's, it's been at the $25,000 level, which $25,000 today is not what $25,000 was, you know, a dozen or more years ago. So, and I, and I appreciate you highlighting the fact that it will save, you know, your staff time, money, and we will see decreased costs associated with putting out formal solicitations. So again, I, I kind of suggested that we raise these limits a few months ago when we had this discussion, and I'm glad to see that you've acted on that. And I just want the public to know that these are, these are very good recommendations from you and your staff, and it will streamline our process, it'll decrease the costs and processes and workflows in your office, and I think it's a very good thing. And I, and I urge my colleagues to support these two policy changes when they come up for a vote next, next month.
Any other comments or questions? Dr. Malvo?
Yeah, and I agree that the limits should be raised and it makes sense, but just wondering, is it possible that with the raised limits, will it narrow the groups that bid? Will it alter anything in terms of the number of bids that we can procure?
No, I wouldn't anticipate that. Again, if something falls just under that amount, we're still looking for competitive quotations, so, you know, we'll, we'll still reach out to, to businesses that, that we know of that want to do business with us, you know, ask for their best quotes, that's commonplace. Yeah, our goal is always to, you know, seek best value, to increase and, and get competition, so, so we don't believe that, that this change reduces our competition in any way, just the, the number of items that, that hit this limit that we need to go to formal bid for. So it keeps it in a, you know, a workable range for staff to be able to manage the bids that we do annually.
Any other questions or comments?
All right. I'll just touch on DJA is the, the sort of corresponding policy for professional technical service contracts. It kind of goes hand in hand. This changing one sort of dictates changing the other, would change the requirement for professional service contracts to come to the board of $50,000 instead of $25,000, so the, the same change really there, professional services are set in a different policy by the board. So really the same, the same action carries through both.
Any questions or comments?
Okay. And we'll be back, we'll be back with this item next month, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Board members. Great, 8A and 8B, we will be here on Wednesday, November 12th, at 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. for our Student Use of Technology Work Session. And that evening, we will be here at 4 p.m., Wednesday, November 12th, for the Public Participation Board Meeting here in the boardroom as well. Do I have a motion to go back into closed from recess? Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Ms. Zimmer. All in favor? All right, all right, thank you guys very much.